All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us for today's Planning Commission meeting. Today's date is August 24, 2022, and the time is 9:30 a.m. Today's meeting is completely remote via Zoom. There are a couple of ways to participate in today's meeting. If your computer is equipped with a microphone, it is recommended that you participate via the Planning Commission Zoom meeting link, which is posted on the Planning Department's homepage at sdcoplanning.com. Alternatively, if your computer is not equipped with a microphone, you may provide comment by telephone. The call-in number is 669-900-6833. The collaboration code is 814-8152-8029. Again, this information is posted on the Planning Department webpage. If you forgot the phone number or the web link, it is there. All right, a little more information about how the meeting will go. During key points in today's meeting, time will be provided for members of the public to provide their testimony. Speakers will be muted until called on to speak. I will ask participants who wish to provide testimony to either remotely raise your hand by selecting the hand icon on the Zoom link, or if calling in by telephone, by remotely raising your hand by pressing star nine. I will call on participants by either your name or the last four digits of your phone number. If you're participating via the Zoom link when I call on you to speak, you'll see a pop-up on your screen that asks you to unmute. Please accept the pop-up and state your name for the record and provide your testimony. If you're calling in via telephone, you must unmute yourself by pressing star six. And I will remind folks of these instructions as we move into the public hearing. If at any time you're having difficulty connecting to the meeting today, we do have support staff with us, Michael Lamb. You can email him anytime, and he will let me know to pause the meeting so that we can make sure that you're connected. His email is michael.lamb@stancruzcounty.us. So he'll be checking his email periodically today, and he's on standby and ready to assist. All right, so those are the instructions. Here's where we're situated. I see our commissioners are with us today. I'll turn the meeting over to Chair Tim Gordon. Good morning.
Good morning, Jocelyn. How are you?
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good morning, commissioners and members of the public and everyone else listening. Today is August the 10th, and we're going to start our Planning Commission hearing. It is now 9:33, and we can call this meeting to order. Wanted to start with a roll call, if we could, please, Ms. Drake.
Right. Commissioner Dan.
Here.
Commissioner Lazenby?
Here.
Commissioner Shepard? Renee?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Yalante?
Here.
And Chair Gordon.
Here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Quick housekeeping item, just wanted to put out there early on that we're going to take a 30-minute lunch break at 11:30 today. So wherever we are in the agenda, we're just going to take a quick pause right when we get to 11:30 and take a lunch break. That being said, we can move on to additions and corrections to the agenda. Do we have any today, Ms. Drake?
Yeah, this is posted on the agenda on the website, but I just wanted to remind everybody that might be listening today that the item number six has been removed from the agenda today. That is the appeal of 22702 East Cliff Drive. That project will be re-noticed in the future when we return to the Planning Commission with that item, probably in October, it's looking like. And then I have another correction actually to the agenda, which is to item number seven, the growth goal item. That correction is that on the posted agenda and the advertised agenda, the description for that item was incorrectly reflects a recommended growth goal of 0.25%. That number should be corrected to 0.5%. And so I wanted to make that correction to that agenda item, and I think policy staff will reiterate that in their presentation as well. And there are no further corrections.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Are there any members of the Commission that would like to declare an expartee communications today? Okay. Commissioner Lazenby?
No, I have none.
Okay, thank you. All right, great. Hearing none, we can move on to agenda item number four, oral communications. This is the time when members of the public have the opportunity to speak on items that are not on the agenda today. Ms. Drake, do we have any members of the public that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, and if we could get two minutes on the timer for these comments. I see that we have one hand raised. Phone number digits 2915. Good morning. Please state your name for the record. You have two minutes. And you need to unmute yourself by pressing star six on your phone possibly. Caller with the last four digits 2915, if you wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself. You have two minutes. Not seeing. I see another hand raised, so maybe we'll go to that person first. I see a hand raised by a gentleman named Oliver. Good morning, Oliver. Please state your full name for the record. You have two minutes. Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, please state your name for the record.
My name's Oliver Carter.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm just speaking in concern about rezoning of 3051 and 3055 Portola Drive. My wife and I are the current owners of Blown-Out Wet Suit Repair and Surf Shack located in the historical landmark at 3055 Portola Drive. This 98-year-old building has a very local, rich local history, and is the site where Freeline Surf Shop began in 1969. Before that, Doug Hout had a surf shop here, and it is also my knowledge that currently this historic building is being considered for rezoning.
Oliver, if I could interrupt a quick second, I apologize, and we can add some time back to this. If this is in regards to the sustainability update?
Yes.
That, okay, so that public comment period has not started yet. This part is for, that's okay, any communication that's not on the agenda. Yep, so.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
I will wait.
Sounds good. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Hi.
All right, so I'll go back to the first caller. With the last four digits 2915, good morning. If you would like to make a comment on anything not on the agenda today, please state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Excellent, thank you. I was pressing star six madly many times, and it just didn't work. So this time, the announcement came on that the host would like me to unmute myself. So thank you for connecting that ability for me.
Sorry about that.
Good morning, this is Becky Steinbruner. I live in rural Aptos, and I have a couple of comments. One is that I had some difficulty in finding the access information for today's meeting. It is not on your agenda, and I would like to ask that it be put on your, sorry, agenda masthead. I had to go to the Planning Department's homepage and scroll down and find it there. So I request that for future better public access and more expedient, that all connection information, including the code star nine to raise your hand, that's not there. But I, you know, we've all gotten used to this, so I start trying that, and it worked to raise my hand, but it's not anywhere in the Planning Commission's or Planning Department's notification. So that's my first request. The second request has to do with the upcoming water issues in our county. And I do note that that is still a big issue in the county's growth goal. But apart from all of that, I want to let you know that there are major restrictions in water permitting coming down the Pike. Governor Newsom issued an executive order N-7-22 that will require any new wells and possibly repairs of existing wells to be reviewed, first of all, by a geohydrologist that will authorize and put their name on a statement that the well will not affect neighboring wells. That's going to be hard to get somebody to do. And then, second of all, those permits have to be reviewed by the appropriate groundwater agency group. So the county environmental health water resources department has developed a form and a rudimentary process, but this is a big deal. The other thing I want to let you know is that yesterday.
Becky, I might interrupt. We appreciate the comment. We're over time. And so we appreciate your feedback and input, and thank you so much.
Okay, are all comments today going to be reduced to two minutes?
No, it's two minutes for a general comment, three minutes for comments under the public hearing items.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Seeing. See. Let me check and see. It looks like we have a hand raised, and I'm having a hard time seeing that one. Let's see. Be with me for a second. It appears we have a hand raised, but I'm not able to locate it here. It's support staff. I'm seeing a hand raised, but I'm not able to see the hand, the person whose hand is up. I'm not sure why that is. It went down, and it went back up again.
Jocelyn, I see Mando Morlos has a hand raised. Can you see that?
Thank you for that. I.
If you scroll all the way up on the attendees.
I am not seeing that person. But thank you for that. Let's call on. Nando? Did you say it was Nando Morais?
Okay, Mando Morlos.
Mande Morlos, okay. Good morning, Mando. Will you please restate your name for the record? And you have.
Good morning, everybody. This is Mondo. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make this quick here. If I understand correctly, this is the meeting about the general plan?
Yes, but the public comment period for the sustainability update will be later in the meeting. This is for, this is the time for folks to provide comment on anything not on the agenda.
Okay, so this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity for us to try to make our community better. And I just found out about this meeting yesterday. So as important as this is with housing and transportation, agriculture, and the list goes on and on, code modernization. I'm hoping that you guys can get together with the local media, the Sentinel, the Parroni and such, so that you can make an announcement. So those of us in the public can have more time to prepare for this, so we can give you guys some better feedback. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, could I comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that this will go before the, our meetings, we have one more meeting on this, and then we'll be through. But it is going to all go to the board. So everything's online, and you can view it there. But you can also appear at the hearings next time and in front of the board. So there still is time for your input and comments.
All right, thank you, Renee. Do we have any additional members of the public who wish to provide comment at this time? I see a hand being raised. And.
Hi, my name is Andrew.
Good morning, Andrew. Please state your name for the record.
Oh, yeah, Andrew Paulini. I live in Boulder Creek. I just want to raise my hand. Just building off what the last commenter said, in terms of making these meetings more available to the public, I understand that making it online is intended to make it more available. But I think the times, because I understand it like the Planning Commission, you know, they don't, they have like a work from like nine to five, right? But so, but like having it 9:30, I think that tends to limit who can participate in these meetings. A lot of people who may be young people who are working or students, or in general, people who at just 9:30 a.m. on a weekday is often, I think, it restricts the people who can participate to mostly, say, retired people or others who can afford to take time off. And that's one thing I'd note about like making this more accessible to the public at large. Since in general, I think one of the issues with a lot of these kind of public meetings to get public input is that it's not really the public. It's just whoever, what part of small fraction of public that has the time and energy to devote to like attending one of these meetings. Since they're not often located at the best times for most people. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and are there any other members of the public who wish to provide general comment at this time? If so, please raise your hand by pressing star nine or using the hand icon on the Zoom app. I am not seeing any at this time, so I will turn it back over to you, Chair.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you to everyone who spoke. And we do really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to be here with us and to provide us feedback. So thank you so much. We understand that it's not always easy. That said, we can close oral communications at this time, move on to the next scheduled item, which is the approval of minutes of the August 10, 2022 Planning Commission hearing. Would any members of the Commission like to make a motion on this?
Commissioner Lazenby, I will move to adopt or approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazenby.
I'll second that.
And a second from Commissioner Dan. Thank you so much. All of those in favor of this, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And any abstaining? Great, with that, the motion passes, and we can move on to our next agenda item. As stated previously by Ms. Drake, agenda item number six has been removed and is going to be re-noticed. And so we are going to move on to agenda item number seven today. Public hearing on recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding the proposed year 2023 growth goal. Ms. Drake, do we have staff in a presentation for this item?
We do. I believe Natisha Williams is with us this morning and will be presenting this item.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Let me share my screen from the presentation. Okay, can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Great, okay. So good morning, commissioners. My name is Natisha Williams. I'm a senior planner for the Community Development and Infrastructure Department. And today I'm here to talk about the year 2023 growth goal. The county's growth management system was instituted in 1979, following the adoption of Measure J to address the resource and public services impacts of population growth in Santa Cruz County. As part of the growth management system, each year the county is required to set an annual growth goal for the upcoming year that represents a fair share of the state's growth. The 2023 growth goal report is before you today for consideration. And before we get started, I wanted to kind of reiterate what Jocelyn had mentioned to note that there was an error in the published agenda for this item. The agenda incorrectly stated that a 0.25% proposed growth goal for the year 2023, when in fact it is, we're proposing a 0.5% growth goal. And we'll discuss this in more detail later in the presentation. Okay, so this growth goal report examines various factors used in establishing the year 2023 growth goal for the unincorporated area, including analysis of population growth trends, resource constraints, the status of this year's allocation, the county's housing needs, including progress towards meeting the county's required RENA or regional housing needs allocation. It also includes a review of demolition permits and density bonus projects approved in the past year, as well as an ADU annual report. And this year's report also includes a discussion on the pipeline of current subsidized affordable housing projects, as well as the continued impacts of recent state law on the county's growth management system. So as the growth goal report notes, the unincorporated area of Santa Cruz County had an estimated negative 3.2% growth rate last year. And all jurisdictions in the county, except for the city of Santa Cruz, also saw around a negative, around a 3%, 3% negative population decline, which is a stark contrast to the year before, when populations were up about 1% everywhere in the county, except for the city of Santa Cruz, which saw a population decrease of about 11%. And these big population shifts in recent years are really closely tied to the COVID-19 pandemic and the stay-at-home orders, particularly in regards to the student population at UC Santa Cruz. The county as a whole has seen declining population totals in recent years with a 0% growth in 2021. And the state population actually decreased for the second year in a row by 0.3% in 2021. Population estimates for cities and unincorporated counties are determined using the housing unit method by the Department of Finance, which means that the number of new units constructed each year plays a really large role in determining the annual population estimates. The DOF also notes that the state's unprecedented negative growth rate in the last couple of years is a result of a few major factors, including continuing declines and natural increase as baby boomers age, and natural increase meaning births minus deaths, as well as continuing declines in foreign immigration that have been accelerated by recent federal policy and delays in the process, as well as the continued increased number of deaths associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. In addition, there's been a decrease in domestic or increase in domestic outmigration. So while population has steadily grown in the state of California and county as a whole, since the mid-20th century, population growth in the unincorporated area has had a slightly different trajectory. As shown in figure A, the unincorporated area's population grew rapidly in the 1960s and 70s, surpassing growth rates in the state and the county as a whole. But growth rates declined in the following decades, and population actually decreased in our area between the 2000 and 2010 census year. But despite these recent, you know, declines that we just talked about from the year-to-year population estimates reported by the DOF, the 2020 census data actually shows that overall the unincorporated county's population is actually on the rise with an average annual growth of 0.2% over the last decade and a total increase of about 2,400 people since 2010. The growth goal also summarizes the current status for the 2022 residential building permit allocations. And this year, 26 allocations have been granted as of July 1st. And if demand continues at the current rate, 52 allocations will be granted by the end of the year. And this is higher than last year, when we saw only 21 building permit allocations granted as of July 1, 2021. Despite the slight increase, demand for allocations has remained low compared to previous decades, and staff anticipates there will be more than enough permits available for the remainder of this year. And although allocations remain low this year, there are a number of major projects currently in construction in the county, including three density bonus projects, the Habitat for Humanity project on Harper Street, the Mid-Penn Housing Project on Capitola Road, and the SoCal Town Homes project. There's also a 100% affordable residential housing project in South County known as Pippin Orchards 2, which is in the construction phase. And all of these projects are reflected on Table 10 of the report, which shows that 219 housing units were issued building permits as of July 1 of this year, including 125 affordable units. And this pipeline of county projects also includes applications for three new density bonus project applications submitted as of July 1 of this year and three density projects currently in preliminary review. In accordance with the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, Senate Bill 330, which was updated with Senate Bill 8, Santa Cruz County will continue to not enforce the Measure J growth goal limit on residential allocations within affected county areas while the statute is in place, which will be until January 1, 2030. In Santa Cruz County, this includes the following CDPs: Live Oak, Paso Tiempo, Paradise Park, and Amesti, as shown in blue on the map on this slide. All other aspects of Measure J unrelated to limiting building permits and population, such as the county's affordable housing requirements, are not impacted by SB 330 or SB 8, and staff will continue to track Measure J allocations in the growth goal report and subsequent building permit issuance for reporting purposes. In addition, pursuant to Santa Cruz County Code, all residential units impacted by the CZU August Lightning Complex fire will continue to be exempt from the Measure J residential permit allocation system. So based on this analysis included in the report, in more detail, staff recommends that the growth goal be set at 0.5% for calendar year 2023. In past years, the county's growth goal has been consistent with the state's, the state of California's growth rate, constituting our fair share of population growth as dictated by Measure J. But as we noted earlier, there were a number of anomalies in the state's growth rate that contributed to population decline. And moreover, census data indicates the population in the county has actually grown over the past decade, and Ambag projections show that this steady increase is likely to continue. In addition, the number of housing projects currently in the county's permitting pipeline, as well as the elevated permit activity seen in recent years, point to a potential increased demand for market rate permits that may continue through next year. And it's also important to consider that state legislation continues to refine state housing and ADU laws and pass additional bills aimed at streamlining housing permits and increasing infill development, such as Senate Bill 9, which will allow up to four units to be built on existing single-family lots. In light of all of this, staff is recommending a 0.5% growth rate for calendar year 2023. This growth rate would result in an allocation of 256 market rate units available for the year 2023, and allocations would be distributed in the between the urban and rural areas uh at a 75 to 25% ratio in order to recognize the greater potential for infill development in urban areas. The 2023 growth goal report also recommends, as in previous years, that the unused market rate allocations from 2022 be carried over to 2023 in accordance with Policy 3.2, the general plan housing element. So this would was results in a projected total of 334 market rate residential building permit allocations available for 2023. And staff has found that establishment of the uh 2023 growth goal is exempt under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, and a notice of exemption has been prepared. And so that staff uh therefore recommends that the Planning Commission, one, conduct a public hearing on the proposed year 2023 growth growth goal, uh adopt the attached resolution, Exhibit A, recommending a year 2023 growth goal of 0.5% for the unincorporated portion of Santa Cruz County, and three, recommend the filing of the CEQA notice of exemption, Exhibit B, with the uh the clerk of the board. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. We really appreciate that. Um, it's always so much so helpful to hear it said and um get some clarification uh along the way. So uh right now, I'll just bring it back to the commission and see if anyone had any questions they'd like to follow up with uh on this topic. Is there any chance we could stop sharing the screen also, so I can see all the of the commission again?
Here we go.
Thank you. Okay. If no one had any questions, I had a few. And this is just something that I know, you know, we see, but uh I saw last year. I just still want to make sure I get it all right in my head here. So um, just to be really clear, this this growth goal, the units that are allowed or allocated for building permits next year, 334 units, that does not include areas in the affected zones by SB 330 and SB 8, and it does not include affordable housing. Is that correct?
So um, you're right that it does not include affordable units. It also does not include um accessory dwelling units. Um, but we are counting areas in those, um, you know, those those blue county affected CDPs. Um, we are adding those to the allocation. They're just for reporting purposes. We wouldn't enforce that if they somehow reached the limit. That's how we're kind of treating that to make sure we're consistent with state law.
Got it. Okay, so. So then how is that allocated? Like, is there a percentage in the affected areas and a percentage that's not? Or is it just like?
No, it's only divided between the urban area and the rural area. Um, most of the affected areas in the urban area, I think there might be some uh like Paso Tiempo might be just outside of the urban services line. Um, but so we just, we just track it and and identify what CDP it's in and and make sure that it's um not being in that the growth goal is not being uh treated as a limit in those specific areas.
Okay. That makes sense. Um, so then, just as this relates to RENA cycle, which is obviously a big deal these days, um, in a lot of units, so we need to permit, you know, with, like you said, things getting faster with permitting process, um, you know, from state bills and things like that. Um, I guess my question is if we actually met our RENA numbers, we we couldn't actually bill them based on this. Is that correct? Or could we? Is there a way around that?
So um, our our RENA numbers for the rest of this cycle, um, let me get the exact number. I believe it's it's less than the recommended um growth goal for this year. So we're just looking at market rate uh permits, um, just as a reminder. So if you look at the market rate permits that we have for the remainder of the cycle, um, it looks like we are. Uh, so there's a total of 570 that remain for this RENA cycle, including 266 market rate units. So this growth goal allows for us to meet it within the next year. Um, and it was, you know, yeah, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
The limit.
And then on the next cycle, will the RENA numbers, because they're going to go up substantially, and correct me, is the is the next cycle start after next year?
I believe it starts after 2023, um, but I I think I'll hand it off to Stephanie um to talk a little bit more about the upcoming RENA cycle.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, Stephanie Hanson, Assistant Director and CDI. Um. Uh, the 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 thing that we don't want the growth goal to do is is limit unnecessarily limit growth. Um, and so staff monitors the numbers as we go along the way, especially as we get toward the end of the year, if we think that um, boy, we might be actually for the first time since like the 70s or 90s, build builds build more than than we had predicted. Um, and in that case, uh, there is an option for uh staff to return to the board to ask them to in increase the number of units. Um, so with the changes um going into place um with the state law initiatives and maybe not next year, but the year after with some of the sustainability update changes we're making, we're hoping to see those numbers increase and the growth goal would logically um be higher to to accommodate to accommodate that. If that if that makes sense, we
Yeah.
we don't necessarily look at the RENA and go, okay, we need like 800 units every year and then set the growth goal that that way. Because hmm, we're not, we're not convinced that a lot of jurisdictions are going to be able to meet those RENAs, you know, the numbers are extreme.
Sure. Yeah, okay. That makes sense. And so I appreciate that. I cleared it up for me. I didn't have any other questions, so I'm not sure if anyone else did, or uh we can move on to public comment if no one else had any further questions. Okay, sounds good. Well, uh, then at this time, we can move on to the public comment portion of this agenda item. Ms. Drake, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
It looks like so. Um, if we could get three minutes on the timer, that would be great. And I am seeing a hand raised again by caller 2915. Um, so good morning. If you could please state your name for the record, that would be wonderful.
Good morning. This is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Becky.
Thank you. Good morning. Um, I'm um. I'm interested in why with reducing with declining county population, the recommendation has been to increase from previous uh recent years a growth goal of point uh 0.25% to now 0.5%. Um, it's not really consistent with the existing trends that we are seeing and with the economy and housing prices. I don't expect that to really uh change. So I'd like some discussion about the um justification for increasing county's growth goal. I also um want to ask about uh some information. I'm seeing Table 8 on page 24. Um, the Measure J residential allocation status. Can you talk about that? Um, what, where are the Measure J units going to be? I understand that process and that they are deed restricted. So um, if you can please let us know if any of these affordable units that have been um supposedly allocated, if those are going to be Measure J deed restricted units. I also have a question on page 23 about um Table 5, allocation status of approved major projects. The Aptos Village Project has a a total market number of 59. There are a total of 69 units there, 10 of which are Measure J units. But I don't understand the units from previous allocations, 49, and that there are 10 remaining allocations um for that project. That doesn't make sense to me, and I would ask that you explain that. Um, I wanted to let you know that the CZU fire rebuilds are going to face a new hurdle because of action the County Board of Supervisors took yesterday regarding the um uh new septic system regulations. It's got, it's called the lamp, and it will, in effect, restrict building and rebuilding in many of the rural areas of our county due to septic constraints that have just been passed as of yesterday. It will require people to put in very expensive um alternative treatment systems that cost upward of $80,000. And all supervisors yesterday acknowledged this will harm the CZU fire people as they try to rebuild. I also want to um point out that um your, once again, your your water issue is here in the growth goal. And um, in Exhibit A, number 7, it um it it you, it talks about the safe yield of the basin. That has not been established yet. So I would like a a scientific reference to what the safe yield is in the growth goal. And because it, to my understanding, has not been established for the basins.
Thank you, Becky. We appreciate it. Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thanks, Chair. All right. All right. Um, I am seeing a hand raised by Andrew Paulini. Um, good morning. Please uh restate your name for the record.
Oh, uh, Andrew Paulini. Oh, um, my comment in um about was kind of a response to the last comment about why the county is increasing its growth goals considering the declining population and also why we're, the county seems to be wanting to um de kind of let more housing be built. I mean, my guess is, I guess you can answer this, but my guess is that's because the plan is to reverse the trend of population decline. Um, I know in particular this that um, you know, Santa Cruz is often a place people like to retire to, but in the end, that tends a declining population growth can lead to us becoming more like some Midwestern towns, become ghost towns over time because people uh sort of leave. And so we're trying to encourage more people to come and live here to try to reverse those trends. I know in my area in Boulder Creek, we had to close uh when I was a little kid. Um, because of declining growth rate, we had to close two of our elementary schools. Um, and also close, I believe, one of our middle schools as well. Um, so I I think that's, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I assume when I saw the plan, I assumed that that was why you're increasing the uh growth goal and trying to make it easier to build more like multifamily housing is to try to reverse those trends, um, which is something that I I very highly approve of. I'd like to see more housing, especially like uh duplexes um or apartments get built. I'd like to be able to live um in Santa, like near, like the center of Santa Cruz someday, where I could, you know, I don't have to drive down to to, you know, go hang out with my friends who live there. So that would be nice. Um, keep housing prices down. Um. Yeah, that's what I had to say.
Right, thank you. Okay. Um, I am, now I am seeing Mando Morales. Good morning again. Please restate your name for the record.
Good morning. This is uh Mando Morales, and I had a question to you guys. Uh, um, maybe you can use the remainder of my time to answer that. How far behind are we in residential units by whatever metrics are used, either by uh the state or by local? If anyone can answer that, I'd really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Well, um, we'll listen to all of the public comments first, and I'll turn it back over to the Planning Commission. Um, are there any additional members of the public wish to speak on this item? If so, um, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone or using the hand icon. All right, I'm not seeing any. Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, great. Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. We really appreciate it. And um, this time we can close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. And I'd like to open it to any commissioners to ask any other questions or comments. And um, you know, if at some point, I'd love to hear some of the responses on some of the public questions as well. Maybe we could start there unless another commissioner had a really wanted to go first. Let's do that. Um, one question in particular, a couple of people asked was, why are we raising the uh population growth? And I, you can just explain that. That'd be helpful.
I'll take a crack at at that. Natasha can uh follow up with numbers. The uh the growth goal, uh the way we kind of project the units is designed to reflect the way we see the trends moving. Um, uh, yes, there has been a decline um for various reasons. It's been an unusual couple of years um with with COVID um in in particular. However, um, for the reasons that Nat- Natasha explained in this, the presentation, um, we have a number of pipeline projects that will come into permitting. Um, we anticipate that the initiatives out of the state that are designed to start to increase housing um will uh start to take effect. Um, so there's, there's a lot of factors that go into, you know, whether we see things continuing to go down um or increasing. Um, we don't, we don't see that the decline will continue if some of these factors really come into play. So um, we uh we would probably never recommend a negative growth goal to the Planning Commission or the board, um, because we really don't want it to uh restrict our ability to to build in any way. Um, so point five is pretty low, and we did have it uh in the past two years. We had point two five reflecting about as low as we can go. Um, but we we are hopeful that um growth will continue and even start to increase in in the rate of the number of units built. Um, the purpose of trying to encourage housing is that um, while there are state mandates, we also just need housing here. We need affordable housing. We need housing options for all people in our community, um, not just wealthy people who have vacation homes. Um, so it's a, you know, when we talk about the housing crisis, I would say we're a good, we're a good candidate for um what that, where you can find the housing crisis. Um, and then there are state mandates for how many units we're supposed to be able to accommodate. Um, and so while I'm at it, I'll just kind of say we're about two thirds of the way there um and have about a year to go on that RENA. So we we, it is very unlikely we will make that number.
Can um? But uh Chair, may I?
Yes, Commissioner Shepard.
I think I want to say that the growth goal was a, you know, it was something the voters voted on in a much different era. There was a proposal um out by the lighthouse to build a community of 30,000 people. And this was in reaction to um large developers' plans to develop this area in a much different way. Uh, times have changed, and we don't have enough housing for people who really want to live here of normal means. On the other hand, it's the hottest housing market in the country for rentals or second or something. And unfortunately, housing prices continue to climb. So it's a much different community than this kind of the growth control measure, which is kind of an artifact, actually um manifests, but it is still emblematic of the fact one thing doesn't change is people want this to be, continue to be a nice place to live and don't want to kill the goose with the legs of golden eggs of why it's special to live in Santa Cruz. So our task as a public and as a government is to figure out how to have more housing, affordable housing, enable people who grew up here to stay here without making it uh, you know, the like many fabled Southern California communities are over the hill. But so, so we are dealing with this every year because it's mandated. So if it doesn't always seem to make sense.
So if it doesn't always seem to make sense, it's because it was voted on in a time when people felt like we were going to become Los Angeles very quickly.
I'd just like to thank Renee for that history and background. And in conjunction with that Lighthouse Field Plan was also, uh, like five-lane freeway that was proposed to go down where Delaware Avenue is currently. So, yeah, there is some history to this, so it's important to understand that history, to understand why we are here right now. Um, and then I'd just like to say also that we are not alone, um, as being a community that is, um, an example of one that's suffering from a housing crisis. You know, Stephanie pointed out, we are one of, of dozens and dozens of communities across the whole country. So I don't want to make it seem like it's just a Santa Cruz thing. Um, this is something that's a nationwide problem.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for that input. That was really beneficial for me.
I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready to have one.
Great, I'm ready.
Yep.
Let's, uh, move the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second, and if there's no further discussion, we can move on to a roll call vote. Ms. Drake?
Commissioner Villalante?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Lazenby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
And Chair Gordon?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, great. Um, with that, we can close Agenda Item Number Seven, moving right along, and move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. This is a public hearing to consider the proposed ordinances, resolutions related to the sustainability policy update and a recommendation to the Board.
Chair Gordon, um, could I just say something real quick before we get started?
Yes.
And that is, there was a public comment during oral communications that was kind of starting to question, um, the process a little bit and, um, suggesting that the times of our meetings, um, you know, are convenient, which I understand most certainly is true for a number of people. But I just wanted to make sure to point out and recognize that I think staff has done an excellent job at planning meetings at a variety of times throughout this process, um, so that people with a whole different schedules can make it. So all of the community meetings last spring were in the evening, which I heard from a number of people was like an absolutely terrible time for them because they have young kids, and that's like the worst time when you have little kids to attend a public meeting. Also, I've heard from students who are young people who have told me that the mornings are great times for them because they don't usually start their day with classes until the afternoon. Um, so I just wanted to commend our staff for providing a number of opportunities throughout the day for people to participate. And just put it out there for folks who are listening that from my perspective, written correspondence is actually the, the best way to communicate because you can be as detailed as you want. I, for instance, just got an email this morning from someone in the district asking about something. She cited a specific part of the plan. I was able to look it up, and I might be asking a question about that this afternoon. So I would just encourage folks to use written correspondence. Um, we all read it, and it's really helpful. So, thank you.
And Chair Gordon, if I may, actually, I appreciate Chair, Commissioner Dan saying that because I was actually going to respond to that comment as well. I, um, I understand that some people don't always learn about some of these hearings until late, but this process has been going on for quite some time, and I, I wanted to acknowledge the fact that there have been several opportunities to participate through a numerous nighttime he, um, hearings, but all, so that these were then recorded and available online and an alternate opportunity. So people weren't able to participate, um, live in those nighttime opportunities. They were also recorded so that people could do exactly what Commissioner Dan is talking about, which is then communicating in a written format, um, with the Commission or even staff, um, to, to participate in this process. So I, I'm, I'm sorry to hear, um, that people learned about this process today. That's always unfortunate because we want people to engage. We want people to be able to participate, but I, I do think staff should be commended, um, on providing a multitude of opportunities and, and putting that out. I know that the, the county did press releases of all of, every single one of those opportunities for each one. They didn't just put out the master schedule, but they then released each hearing, um, and we did have participation. Then each of those opportunities was then recorded and put online. So I do think that they've done a good job. I know that no time is ideal for everybody. Um, as Commissioner Dan said, mornings can be bad for people who work, evenings can be bad for people with small children or who are caregivers in general. Uh, so I know that, that's, but that's why we provided this diverse opportunity of times. And so I just, I want to make sure that we respond when, when there are sometimes these statements that there are only one opportunity. That's certainly not the case here. Um, and so I just, I did, I do feel that sometimes we need to respond to comments like that, 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 um, characterize these things as, as being singular or last minute, which this, uh, I agree with the, the comments that this is a large, large change and, um, but I feel like staff has done a good job of responding accordingly in terms of the writing opportunity.
Uh, Chair Gordon?
Sure. Please, Commissioner Shepard.
Uh, I had two cents to add to that. When, yes, what I heard from the public is that they didn't get that the sustainability update is really a general, a review of the general plan. I think they have nomenclature here because a lot of people didn't get that. That's what I heard. So I'd like to suggest that when the Board advertises their hearings on this topic, that the word, the fact that we are updating and changing the general plan, somehow that language gets involved because the word sustainability, um, people don't know what it means. So I do want to say that, and I wanted to let anybody who's still here remind them that they still have plenty of time to participate. This all gets, goes before the Board of Supervisors and gets discussed in detail again. So I think Commissioner Dan is absolutely right. Get ahold of a copy, look it up online, and then put your comments in writing to your, um, supervisor because they do get read. There is one thing that I, when I did talk to Annie about a few things, and I wanted to bring it up again. Reading it online is of course useful, um, and saves paper, but I have found it real difficult if you're looking, uh, at a chart or a grid and you look on one page and then three pages later, it shows what's changed or what's different. It's not really hard to go back and forth, scoot down three pages and try to remember what you saw three pages ago. So I think these complicated documents, if you could put them up side, with side-by-side pages so you can at least compare things, I, that, or at least put a printed copy in, in the library or at the planning department so people actually want to come and compare parts of, uh, you know, some of the grids of what's permitted and what's, what the changes are. I had a hard time finding what the changes were compared to, said what they will be, but didn't say what they were, or if it did, it was a few pages different. Uh, is it possible to have the documents, an option for, for pages being side, side like a book so you can refer back and forth easily? That's one suggestion I had, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate everyone's feedback. Um, obviously second everything everyone said, so, um, with that, I will move on with a couple housekeeping items on this topic. Just as a reminder, we have an eleven-thirty lunch break today, so thirty minutes at eleven-thirty. We'll just take a hard stop at eleven-thirty, um, as long as we're not in the middle of presentation or, you know, something that was a really awkward spot to stop at, you know, plus or minus a couple minutes there. Um, second thing on this topic is we do have a, a rough hard stop today of close to one o'clock. And so, you know, my recommendation would be that we, you know, and I'm going to follow Ms. Hanson's lead here because she's kind of got the plan to how to get us through these things one at a time, um, but that we kind of find a rough stopping point around then and, and would move to continue to the next hearing for motions on any of the topics.
Well, I, I'd like to discuss that. I don't think we're going to get this, through this thing by one o'clock, and we only have one other meeting. I would be okay with going ahead and getting everything done this afternoon, and I know that's a burden for Allison, but either that or just have another extra meeting. I, I don't see how we can get everything done in one meeting in September.
I think Commissioner Lazenby also has to leave by one-thirty, so that would be two commissioners that would be leaving between one and one-thirty, so I'm wondering if that would be a...
Let me, can I propose something? Why don't, um, we go forward, hear the staff presentation, and then, um, those commissioners, and then we try to get through as much as we can, um, and then make a call at one-twenty and see where we are and what we need to do next. Does that sound good?
I think so.
But I want to at least to open the option of having another half-day meeting.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Let's discuss that. Like, let's, let's stop like ten minutes before the hard stop, whenever that is, and then, um, have that discussion, leave ten minutes for that discussion.
I, I just want to make sure that is possible if we had another extra meeting for like, you know, four hours.
Anything's possible.
Well, usually this is where Stephanie says, well, we can't afford the time and it has to go to the Board and so on, so I want to make sure I'm about to hear.
I would guess that we would schedule that before the fourteenth.
Yes.
Yeah, so we could stay on schedule. But yeah, okay, sounds good.
Great. Okay, so I think we're all pretty much on the same page. Great. Um, so with that, then, we can move on, and Ms. Hanson, if you could give us a little bit of an outline of, you know, what our process will be, that'd be really helpful for me. Um, so we can kind of, you know, march through this one at a time, and then obviously staff presentation, go from there.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chair Gordon and Commissioners. See, I have a reputation to work on in terms of trying to keep us, uh, focused, and, and Commissioner Dan is, is right, there is an opportunity for more meetings, certainly, and it'd be helpful to have them in between, um, before nine-fourteen if possible. So, uh, Chair Gordon and I were, have been discussing how to organize our review here in, uh, in an orderly fashion that's kind of clear to everybody so that, um, we can, uh, get everybody's input and have it, um, be straightforward for, for people. It can get kind of crazy with motions when folks are making motions. So, um, what we talked about is, uh, for today, we're going to do the staff presentation. We'd like to be able to get through the whole presentation. Um, and then, um, what we're recommending to, to the Chair is that for any commission comment, um, we go, we open the public hearing and, and hear from the people who are attending and waiting, um, especially with, uh, such a large project. We want to make sure that the people have taken time to be here, uh, can, can have their input, um, and, you know, aren't, don't have to return and aren't required to kind of come back at a later date when they've been waiting for, for hours. So, um, we, we're recommending that we go right to public comment, and then, um, and then we can have commission discussion after that. Um, uh, and we understand that it may, uh, not all happen today. Um, uh, and we're hoping if there's, you know, if there's d, d, any direction that the commission wants to offer to staff that we're, um, that we get, we get that. Um, and then when it comes time to make the motions, which I, I am hearing would not, probably not happen today because I think there is some discussion that needs to happen, um, we'll, we'll work with Chair Gordon to, to break out the documents so that we're accepting motions first on the, uh, first you would have, um, the straight-out motion to, you know, recommend approval as, as the staff recommendation is, and then we would have a series of amending motions. We start with the general plan, and then we'll go through it chapter by chapter. So, um, Chair would call out and say any, what are, any comments on the built environment element, on introduction, built environment, um, access and mobility, and we'll just go down, down the line, um, of all the chapters of the general plan. And then basically, we do the same thing for the county code, break it out. First, first Title Five and Title Twelve, those are fairly minor. I don't think we'd have too much there. Um, Chapter thirteen-ten, which is the big one, and we'll take some time, Chapter thirteen-eleven and, and so forth until we get through all the chapters and the title in the code. Um, then we'll move to the third component, which is the design guidelines, and see if there's any amending motions there. Uh, then the fourth component would be map amendments and see if there's any motions there. Um, so you'll see in the staff report, we've tweaked the, uh, recommendation just a little bit because there are items that we know we're coming back for on nine-fourteen, so the, um, the recommendation has shifted a teeny bit for that. Um, uh, and so I, I think that, that, that would cover it, and then, um, that'll get us through kind of, today, we can have a reminder at your, uh, at the continued hearing, whether that's on nine-fourteen or before, um, and then kind of pick up where we, uh, left off at, at that point. And then, um, uh, so I anticipate some discussion before we get to the motion part of this, and, and that's probably the best way to do it anyway. So, um, did I, did I cover that okay, Chair?
Yes, perfect. Thank you so much. I think that's really clear. So, you know, we'll get through discussion today, and then as we do motions one at a time. And so, you know, as commissioners are, um, you know, kind of thinking through responses and, and getting ready for the coming weeks, uh, or coming sessions of, of making motions, I'd just ask that, you know, try to organize in that fashion, you know, general plan intros, then built environment, you know, et cetera, county code by each title, then design guidelines, then map amendments, as Ms. Hanson said. I think that then we can really walk through these, uh, much more easily. So, thank you so much.
Can I just ask, Chair, it's okay to organize your comments and suggestions by going by the staff, uh, report, um, organization? That's how I have them right now. Is that what you kind of meant?
Um, yes, it kind of, I, I think that ideally we would vote in, in sections of general plan and then sections of code. Um, so it would be one, um, one, um, motion to approve with amendments, and then each separate amendment would be based on those sections.
I'll, I'll just say it generally does follow the staff report organization.
Yeah.
Good, because I, I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Otherwise, there's these three, three-inch volumes here, and I have trouble figuring out what all everything, since everything's name is kind of different from, anyway.
Understood. Thank you.
Um, Chair, I, I just wanted to be clear, and maybe I misheard, but this, um, suggested organization, which I think makes sense, um, is for when we take action on the fourteenth.
Yes, yes, ma'am, absolutely. So, yes, that would be it. So then we can really clearly adjust certain sections, um, as a group.
Um, and then, you know, I think that if there are kind of voluminous, um, amended, so, you know, suggestions to add into a motion, it's probably helpful to put those on a separate document so that we can all share screens if possible, um, because reading, you know, if I have, you know, recommended changes that run two or three pages, to have to read those aloud will be too much. So what I'm doing is preparing separate Google Docs for all of those, which then, um, you know, if we're still remote, which I imagine we will be, you know, we can share screens or send them to staff, and staff can put them up for our discussion. That's how I'm doing it.
That's an awesome idea. Is that possible, Ms. Hanson, as we go through to co, combine these, and, you know, someone can be typing them as we're saying them so we can like read through it as a group, you know, exactly what our amendments are, and then agree to that document?
Um, staff wouldn't be typing as we go along. I think what, uh, Commissioner Dan is saying is she's preparing a document with her proposed changes, and she'll share her screen so you can all visually see it instead of her having to say one thing after another, because I, I know that, um, she's, um, been conducting a detailed re, review, so that's excellent. Um, so it wouldn't be an iterative thing, um, and then staff will have to figure out how to go, based on the discussion, go back and come back with changes on the fourteenth.
That makes sense.
I just don't quite understand. So I understand that we are, and I don't want to, and obviously we need to get on with it, but we're going to hear the staff report, we're going to hear from the public, and we may or may not have more time today. We're going to consider an additional meeting. At that meeting, we can give comments on this, which was under consideration for today. And in, in that case, I, I don't have any comp- And in, in that case, I, I don't have any complicated Google Docs, but I have some suggested changing in wording, things I don't agree with and why I don't agree with them. And, and that's what I was planning to do on the fourteenth. That's a kind of place to kind of have, the staff should, by then would responding to her suggestions. And that would be the final wrap up, right?
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, I, maybe I shouldn't have, you know, weighed in on this. I think everybody should, should prepare in a way that works for them. So, yeah, I think with, you know, the way you do, way you operate is, is just fine. So, yeah.
I think that, to be clear though, we're going to provide feedback. And then before the last hearing and before a motion, we would have an updated response from the planning department on our comments, correct? For the majority of things, assuming we can get through it before we go to make motions, if it's day of changes, then obviously it would need to be an amended motion, but.
I, I mean, I think we'll have to see what they are, right? If we're, if we're getting the sense that there's kind of unanimous agreement from the commissioners, then I think we could come back with that change. There may be some items that the commission doesn't agree on. And in, in that case, we would ask the commission to, you know, make the motion. And then we'll see how the votes go. And then, so it's gonna be probably a little bit of a mix. If it's, if it's real clear cut, we can bring it back and then, but if it's something that we're seeing may, people may have differing opinions on, then that, that'll need to be motion driven. So there's a vote on them.
That makes sense. And that reflects what you've done so far. I mean, if we look at like what's in the packet from the last meeting, you responded to some things, changed some things, responding and, but not everything. So that's just something we then actually do a bird dog and then make determinations on our own, what we wanna do with that, so.
Yeah, some, some of these things are policy questions. And that's why we're here at the commission, to have the commission set the policy, help set the policy for the board.
That makes sense to me. Thanks, Stephanie.
Yes.
Thank you. Probably move on then to the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, I'll get us started today. Welcome, everybody. We're very excited to be here at the first hearing. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the public outreach that we've conducted so far. I, I know for some people this is new, but as Commissioner, Commissioners Dan and Violanti mentioned, it has been somewhat extensive. So I'll be presenting today. And with me today also presenting is Daisy Allen and Annie Murphy, both senior planners. We also have Anais Shank, who is our transportation planner. Natasha Williams is with us on deck. She's sharing her screen and helping the project with the presentation. Also with us today are Stephanie Strilo and I think Catherine Wade, who are with DUDEC, who prepared the environmental impact report and can help us if there's any questions about, about that report. Okay, so a little bit of organization here. We'll begin with a review of the background goals and outreach for this project. Followed by an overview of the general plan amendments. And then, as we've been talking about, the county code amendments and the design guidelines, the map amendments. And then we'll just do a quick overview on the final environmental impact report as well. For today's discussion, we're gonna be fairly focused on the changes that we've made since the original draft documents have come out in February. These are meant to reflect changes that staff saw as well as planning commission comments that we've received along the way. As always, we encourage folks to visit the project website to view the changes. The new ones are highlighted in yellow on, on the, on the documents. And, and also the, all of the, the presentations and community meetings that we have had over the, the last months are also posted on the project website. We'll, we'll show the link for that as we move along here. Okay, so a little bit more background. The sustainability update, which is a regulatory and policy update to our general plan and county code, has four main components. There's amendments to the general plan, which includes our local coastal program. Amendments to the county code, which implements the general plan. There are new county design guidelines that are proposed. And then there are amendments to the land use and zoning map, maps. And we'll, we'll discuss each of these components in more detail as we go along in this presentation. The sustainability update has several project goals. The first one is to implement the sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan, which was a planning study accepted by the board back in 2014. The project aims, also aims to streamline and update and modernize our development codes. And that incorporates the code modernization effort that began in 2013. When you put these things together, we, we are hoping to implement a vision for more sustainable urban communities. The amendments primarily deal with our urban areas. The project also addresses projected growth. Santa Cruz County, like all jurisdictions, is required under planning law to plan and accommodate for a certain amount of population, housing and economic growth. So the update of the general plan is a twenty year document, has a twenty year planning horizon from 2020 to 2040. And finally, consistency with newly adopted county plans and state legislation, regional plans also informs the project. Planning law requires that jurisdictions reflect and be consistent with a variety of state laws as well as the regional plans for the area and the California Coastal Act for jurisdictions like ours that are, that are near the coast. So, you know, a little bit about the outreach that has, has been done so far. The, this is a multi-year process and the draft documents were released back in February of this year. And last week, we updated them to reflect the new changes that we've talked about and the planning commission's feedback so far. The new drafts include some minor changes that are kind of more cleanup items as well as items from the planning commission, as I mentioned, and feedback from the public too. We're including additional staff analysis and input from other agencies. All substantive changes are shown in underlined and strike through and highlighted in yellow. Outreach for the sustainability update builds on previous visioning and public meetings that were originally completed for the sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan, which had a variety of community meetings and, you know, and was really a visioning process for our urban areas. There were also several meetings that were conducted from 2011 through 2015 related to modernizing the code. Our website for the project was launched in 2020 and provides access to all the documents as well as summaries, fact sheets in English and in Spanish, provides a variety of opportunities to comment on the project and the documents. Includes a project survey that people can take. And as of August fifth, we've received a hundred and fifty-five surveys back. Those are exhibit M in the planning commission packet. The project website also includes a public comment portal, which provides an open forum. So far, we've received more than a hundred written comments and those are included in your packet as exhibit L. We've done a social media campaign and email outreach, which has been extensive, reaching over three thousand members of the community with every email. This list also includes the stakeholders and groups and local agencies and community organizations and those folks who have commented and reached out to us. We had seven community meetings this spring that focused on various topics. Community meetings had over a hundred and sixty attendees and recordings of the meetings are also available on the project website. Between May and August of this year, we conducted ten study sessions at a variety of county commissions to review major updates proposed for the project and identify recommended changes. There were four here at the planning commission, but also we visited the Housing Advisory Commission, the Latino Affairs Commission, the Agricultural Policy Advisory Commission, and a couple of different bodies at the Regional Transportation Commission. And so that's a little bit of background on our outreach. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Daisy, who can begin the discussion on the general plan.
Okay, great. Thank you, Stephanie. So the amendments to the general plan include updates to five chapters. Chapter one, the introduction, has been rewritten to focus on sustainability and to align with recent local, regional and state planning efforts. Chapter two, land use, has also been rewritten and has been renamed the Built Environment Element. And it integrates the existing general plan, chapter two, land use, and chapter eight, community design, with a focus on residential and commercial development. The Built Environment Element and the related code updates were reviewed at the Planning Commission Study Session on June eighth, for anyone looking for more information about that. Chapter three, circulation, has been renamed the Access and Mobility Element to reflect a focus on movement of people rather than movement of vehicles. This chapter and related transportation regulations were reviewed at the Planning Commission Study Session on June twenty second. The concepts in the Built Environment Element are strongly linked to transportation concepts in access and mobility in order to focus new development along transportation corridors and to promote the goals of sustainable development. The project also partially amends chapter five, the Conservation and Open Space Element, renamed Agriculture Resources and Conservation. Changes to this chapter focus on substantive updates to agricultural policies, updates to policies for groundwater, timber and other resources to ensure consistency with state law and to implement best management practices. Partial amendments are also proposed for chapter seven, Parks, Recreation and Public Facilities, to be consistent with the Park's strategic plan and to ensure that county facilities are adequate to accommodate projected growth. Changes to these chapters were reviewed at the August tenth and June twenty second Planning Commission Study Sessions, respectively. The general plan glossary and appendices have also been updated to align with updates to these five chapters of the general plan. And all the draft general plan chapters, as well as the glossary and appendices, are available on the project website, as Stephanie mentioned. The remaining three general plan chapters will not be updated as part of this project. Those chapters include chapter four, housing, which is scheduled to be amended in 2023. Chapter six, public safety, which was amended by the board in 2020, based on commission recommendations and is currently pending certification by the Coastal Commission. And chapter nine, which will now be chapter eight, noise, which was amended in 2019. So then, now we'll go ahead and explain several key substantive changes that have been made to the draft general plan amendments based on feedback received from the public and from the planning commission since February of this year. The staff report provides a detailed analysis of all of the substantive changes. And they're all highlighted in yellow in exhibit F of your packet, as Stephanie mentioned. And although not all the topics will be included in this presentation, we're happy to talk about any other changes the commission would like to discuss today. Okay, so there's a couple of key changes to note on the Built Environment Element, since the public draft was initially released in February. Regarding residential development and density, staff received a lot of comments about the new proposed land use designations. The, sorry, the new proposed land use designation residential urban high flex and the associated RF zone district. This designation and zone district have been updated to allow ground floor commercial development in order to address the concern about the potential loss of commercial land uses on sites that are zoned RF along commercial corridors, such as Portola Drive. Staff did stop short of requiring ground floor commercial uses in the RF district in order to maintain flexibility for developers and to keep the focus in this district on the provision of housing. Staff is not proposing changes to the proposed density range of twenty-two to forty-five units per acre in residential urban high flex. Comments were received that this density was too high and comments were also received that it is too low. This indicates to staff that the proposed density may be about right for the highest density residential district in the community at this time. When the Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan was developed, an early estimate of the maximum density that could be achieved in this district was sixty units per acre. However, a maximum density of forty-five units per acre encourages developers wishing to achieve higher densities to incorporate affordable units and pursue the density bonus program. Note that for the RF zone district, zone district, staff is proposing updates to open space and floor area ratio standards, which I'll discuss a little bit later when we get into the county code portion of this presentation. Regarding commercial development and density, staff conducted initial, additional analysis to address concerns raised by commissioners and members of the public about the proposed maximum floor area ratio of one point oh for commercial land use designations. The concern was that this FAR was too low to support the intensity of development needed, particularly for housing in mixed use projects and for projects with underground garages or podium parking, which is an above-ground parking garage with commercial or residential development above. Staff found that for commercial developments with surface parking, a maximum floor area ratio of one is generally sufficient because the square footage required for parking, it becomes a limiting factor for development. However, staff is proposing two updates to commercial FAR to accommodate cases where the required parking square footage is reduced. And these updates would apply to mixed use projects as well. So the first update would be increasing FAR from one to one point five for all commercial land use designations except industrial in order to ensure that FAR does not limit commercial development for projects where surface parking requirements are greatly reduced. And then secondly, for projects that accommodate at least seventy-five percent of their parking with a multi-story garage, underground garage or podium parking, those projects would now be exempt from maximum FAR. So that would ensure that FAR is not a limiting factor to development of those types of projects. And that aligns with the proposed policies and design guidelines promoting these various alternatives to surface parking lots. And then finally, as a result of coordination with coastal staff on the draft Built Environment Element, staff made two key policy updates. Policy, the policy regarding conversion of coastal priority uses was updated to address each use separately and add more specificity as to what criteria would allow for such a conversion. And staff is continuing to coordinate with coastal staff on this policy and it's, it may be tweaked further as that coordination continues. And then secondly, it was determined that it will not be possible to update policies related to the existing memorandum of understanding between the County Coastal Commission and City of Watsonville regarding development west of Watsonville without considerable coordination between the MOU parties and an update to the MOU itself. So for that reason, the existing general plan policies and programs regarding this MOU have been retained and moved to a, a new objective within the Built Environment Element. And I'll also note that the Planning Commission Study Session on June eighth, there was a request for more information regarding the proposed change to calculate urban residential density using gross site area rather than net developable site area. And staff did provide an example with analysis in the staff report and can clarify further if the commission would like. Now I'll hand it over to Anis to discuss updates to the access and mobility element.
Thanks, Daisy. So the key changes in the access and mobility element relate to transportation demand management and responding to comments from the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission. We often just say S S, S R T C, excuse me. The changes related to the TDM include a new appendix, which was added to bring clarity on TDM options for applicants. So that's appendix I of the general plan, which includes categories of design measures. So people So that's appendix I of the general plan, which includes categories of design measures. So people can see which measures are related to infrastructure and therefore one-time investments versus measures that are ongoing and require monitoring. And these are labeled as incentives in the appendix. Also, a new general plan strategy was added to consider allowing paid parking and other parking strategies as TDM options beyond what is provided in appendix I. This is based on EIR mitigation for sequoia impacts related to VMT, as well as input from the first and fifth district supervisors. There will be more discussion of sequoia at the end of this presentation. A number of changes were made based on comments and coordination with the SSC RTC. I'm just going to say RTC for the ease of speaking here. These include updating language in the chapter introduction to acknowledge benefits of reducing VMT other than greenhouse gas reductions, as well as updating text related to the locally preferred alternative for the rail corridor, which was based on the transit alternatives analysis conducted by RTC. Also, language around vision zero policies and implementation strategies was updated to correspond to best practice vision zero philosophy. Additional changes include generalizing policy language related to metro's upgrades, adding transit to potential multimodal impacts that new development should consider when analyzing level of service and policy changes to address accessibility based on public feedback. At the planning commission study session on June twenty second, commissioners requested additional information to help clarify some other concepts presented in the access mobility element, including high-quality transit, Dutch intersection, the difference between level of service and VMT or vehicle miles traveled. So those have been provided in the staff report, starting on page eleven of your packet. During that study session, planning commissioners also requested clarity on the Portola Drive streetscape concepts that are analyzed in the EIR and to what extent and how they will be implemented. The Portola Drive improvements are conceptual in nature and include both near and long-term concepts. Before these concepts can be implemented, there would need to be further engineering and design to provide more detail than the draft concepts provide. Projects would need to be added to the capital improvement program and grant funding would be required. The streetscape concepts are referred, referenced in the access and mobility element and appendix J of the general plan. Appendix J is the appendix that includes future roadways and intersection improvements. The commission may consider an amendment to this appendix to further analyze improvements related to the Portola Street Drive streetscape concepts. And staff also recommends removal of the term adopted in the introductory language to the appendix. So now I'm going to pass it back to Annie to talk about the argument.
Thank you, Anise. Changes have been made to policies in the agricultural, natural resources and conservation element related to agricultural land and visual resources to address comments from your commission. Regarding agricultural policies, both your commission and the coastal commission were concerned that amendments allowing for the expansion of water and sewer districts to serve CA parcels were overly broad and could lead to the conversion of agricultural land. In response, policies have been amended in coordination with the water resources staff to clarify that water and sewer districts could be expanded to serve CA parcels only where necessary to serve existing development with failing septic systems or with wells that do not meet state drinking water standards. Staff did discuss with water resources the idea of limiting the size of service lines or requiring a non-access strip around these lines. However, water resources staff was concerned that these amendments may inhibit the ability to extend service where needed and believes that the proposed language provides appropriate safeguards for agricultural land. Regarding the placement of new water and sewer lines on CA land in the coastal zone, previous amendments that would have allowed new water and sewer lines to serve public facility uses on CA have been deleted. The provisions allowing the placement of water and sewer lines to recharge groundwater or reduce saltwater intrusion has also been updated to apply only to areas served by the Paharo Valley Water Management Agency or PP Water. PV Water supplies recycled water to parcels in the district, including CA parcels, in order to reduce saltwater intrusion and recharge the groundwater, which is essential both to protect public health and the long-term viability of commercial agriculture. Policy language has also been amended to clarify that hookup to trunk lines may be permitted where necessary to provide water and sewer service to CA parcels where otherwise allowed in the general plan. Moving on now to public and quasi-public uses on CA land. In response to planning commission comments from the August tenth study session, as well as coastal mission comments regarding the conversion of commercial ag land to accommodate public, quasi-public uses, staff has proposed additional amendments to protect commercial agricultural land and ensure consistency with the coastal act. These changes have been provided as replacement pages to your packets with changes highlighted in green. The previous general plan draft included a new general use category of public, quasi-public use that would be allowed on both CA and A parcels, intended to accommodate a variety of essential public facility uses. In the updated draft, this broad use category would no longer be allowed on CA. However, the draft retains and adds references to the specific community and public facility uses allowed on CA in the agricultural uses chart. This approach will allow appropriate community and public facility uses to be added to CA in the future, while otherwise limiting new public facility uses to those currently allowed in the ag uses chart. Language has also been retained that allows a landfill as well as a transfer station on CA accommodating the Buena Vista landfill site. Staff has also deleted the new provision that would have allowed the conversion or subdivision of CA land to accommodate a public facility use. The new public, quasi-public use as a general category would continue to be allowed on A-zone parcels, expanding sites where PF uses can currently be considered. Minor changes have been made to policies in chapter five and other general plan chapters to address comments from the drainage division of the CDI department, which ensure consistency with county design criteria and best management practices. Your commission requested additional information regarding deletion of septic policies. John Ricker has clarified that the deleted policies include very specific requirements that are better addressed in the county code. And was also mentioned, John Ricker recently brought to your commission an update to the county code and septic policies to be consistent with the county's local management program for onsite wastewater treatment. And once these are approved, these policies will be included in the general plan. Steph has also made several changes to policies for visual resources. Policy language regarding development visible from a public beach has been clarified, removing the phrase adversely visible and retaining the intent of the existing policy. There was also discussion about retaining this existing policy language that does not allow the creation of new parcels, which would require structures to project above the ridge line. Language has been added to retain this policy intent and other policy language has been clarified. Finally, regarding the proposed amendments to remove the local scenic designation for the urban portions of Highway One, commissioners expressed concern about the loss of trees along the highway. For commission comments, a new strategy has been added to direct the county to coordinate with Caltrans to replant trees along urban portions of Highway One. This strategy will help screen new development, enhance the urban forest and improve the visual qualities of the highway corridor while allowing development to proceed along, on sites along the highway within the USL. The second component of the sustainability update project is amendments to the county code. These amendments include updates to Title twelve, building and Title thirteen, planning and zoning regulations, which include changes to zoning, design and coastal regulation chapters, as well as a new parking and circulation chapter. Title eighteen, procedures has also been updated. And there are also other minor associated changes to titles five and fifteen. Key amendments to the code include a new permit system replacing the current processing levels with more descriptive permit terms, the creation of the new residential flex zone district and a new workplace flex zone district that provides centers of employment with a flexible mix of commercial and light industrial land uses, meeting the daily needs of workers. Code updates also include new agricultural and event regulations, updated zone district use charts, revised design review regulations and revised development standards for several districts, including new mixed use standards. Overall, these code amendments serve to both modernize the code and align with general plan changes. Updates related to the new zone districts reviewed at the June eighth study session and code modernization was discussed with your commission on August twelfth. Today's presentation will focus on key changes to the code related to agricultural and event regulations, animal keeping and transportation, as well as development standards. The staff report provides detailed analysis of all substantive changes to draft county code amendments since they were last presented to your commission. These changes are highlighted in yellow in exhibit G of your packet. And although we are not discussing all topics in the presentation, we're happy to talk about any other code changes your commission would like to discuss. Regarding changes to agricultural regulations, the coastal commission commented that amendments allowing new or expanded ancillary uses should include standards to limit the conversion of agricultural land. In response for several agricultural support uses, staff has added back in size caps on the development area, which is the total area that can be covered by structures or materials that may impact the agricultural soil. The reinstated size caps have been previously considered by the agricultural policy advisory commission and the farm bureau, who found the proposed caps acceptable. To address coastal commission comments and concerns regarding cumulative impacts on agricultural land resulting from multiple ancillary uses on the same site, staff has amended the county code to limit the total development area of a site for residential and ancillary support uses to sixty thousand square feet. This cap is sufficient to accommodate agricultural processing facilities, large agricultural storage areas serving multiple parcels or sites that may have a residence as well as agricultural support uses, while limiting the conversion of agricultural land. Staff will also follow up at the September fourteenth hearing or future study session with updates to the county code to be consistent with general plan changes reviewed today regarding public facilities on CA land and water and sewer service to CA parcels. Staff has also made several changes to animal keeping regulations in response to coastal commission comments. Regarding small animals, staff has updated code requirements to limit roosters, peacocks and other noisy fowl to four birds per acre. For large animals, including horses, the side and rear setback requirements for paddocks has been reduced from twenty-five feet, previously proposed to twenty feet, which is the current minimum setback. In response to commission comments, planning staff has also followed up with environmental health staff who indicated that they differentiate between paddocks, which are unvegetated enclosures for horses and livestock, and larger pastures or turnout areas which are vegetated. Environmental staff has clarified that the twenty-foot setbacks should be applied to paddocks, but it's not necessary for vegetated pastures. Staff is proposing to update the code accordingly and will bring this language to your commission on September fourteenth. A reference has also been added to the code to newer management plans as required by environmental health. Responding to your planning commission comments that noticing proposed for community events in rural areas may not be sufficient, staff has updated noticing requirements, adding that when there are fewer than ten parcels within five hundred feet of the subject property, a five-hundred-foot distance would be extended in increments of fifty feet until owners of at least ten properties have been notified. The planning commission also asked whether events with fewer than a hundred people are subject to the regulations for community events. Since community events are defined in part as nonprofit events with more than one hundred guests, events with fewer than one hundred guests would not be subject to regulations or noticing requirements for community events. However, such events will continue to be subject to code regulations protecting properties from offensive noise and regulations which declare it unlawful to host a loud or unruly gathering. Regarding commercial weddings, commissioners asked whether the code includes standards that specify the maximum number of guests or number of events allowed per year. The new regulations do establish appropriate zone districts, minimum parcel size, permit reviews and noticing requirements. However, appropriate limits on event size and frequency may vary depending on the location and proximity to other residences, parcel size, road access, parking availability, potential noise impacts and other factors. In the proposed regulations, limits on event size and frequency would be established during the discretionary review process with input from the required neighborhood meeting and noise studies where appropriate. Now, Anise will review code changes related to access and mobility.
So there's two sections to this slide. One is clarification on questions that were asked previously and then the other part is changes. So planning commissioners had asked for clarification at the study session on June twenty-second about whether TDM requirements in the proposed code would apply to existing development. As was mentioned in the last session, TDM strategy or TM requirements are not required for existing development. Staff has confirmed that this is in the first section of that code. Commissioners also requested additional information to understand how parking standards have changed and clarify whether those new standards would reduce or increase parking requirements for specific uses. Staff has prepared exhibit J, which explains the existing and proposed parking ratios for various land uses and whether these changes result in fewer or more parking spaces required. Commissioners also requested information regarding why the parking standards are different from multifamily than single-family residential development. The parking standards for multifamily are based on square feet rather than bedrooms to encourage smaller units that are more affordable by design. There is also a discussion related to this about market demand for parking. Staff would like to know that there is guest parking provided for multifamily where there is not for single family. There was also a question about whether bicycle parking standards have been updated and whether there are exceptions that allow for vehicle parking reductions or vehicle parking maximums as a TDM strategy. The existing code prior to any proposed changes contains a provision for a maximum increase of ten percent above the required parking and staff has not proposed to change its maximum. Proposed code does include an increase to bicycle parking ratios from the current existing ratios, as well as includes requirements for secure bike parking, which is parking that is covered in locking. The proposed code also includes a requirement for, for providing shower facilities for specific land uses. It includes an allowance to convert up to ten percent of vehicle parking to bicycle parking. And staff has not proposed any changes to that proposed code for the bicycle parking provisions. Only supportive comments have been received thus far on those particular bicycle parking provisions. There are also parking reduction allowances that are carried over from the existing code that are not proposed to be changed at this time. For example, an allowance for shared parking is provided for in the existing code and there are several, are several reductions based on state laws, such as for ADUs. Staff is not proposing to create a separate set of parking ratios for coastal areas as was suggested as the goal of the modernization project was to simplify the code. However, there are a few changes to the parking that address comments made previously. Based on the comments from public, the large employer threshold for implementing TDM was reduced from two hundred to one hundred employees. And the language to explain TDM requirements in the code was simplified, simplified wherever possible. A parking exception was provided or is proposed as the change to allow parking reduction for residential projects of ten or more units that are within the USL and within a one-half mile of public transit if those projects provide annual metro passes, extra bike parking and charge separately for parking from the housing costs. And this change was made based on District One and District Five supervisors' direction. Also, the minimum amount of van parking required for commercial and tourist-based land uses was increased to two spaces. And this was made to accommodate people with disabilities and a comment that the van ratios have been too low in the past, causing people to park far away. The guest parking requirement in the Loda, Salz, Dundasda, which includes pleasure point, was increased from thirty, increased to thirty percent from twenty percent. And the reduction for projects within a one-half mile of high-quality transit was removed for these areas. Additionally, there was a new requirement for shared parking analysis for these areas, which requires an analysis of visitor parking demand for the, for those uses. Now Daisy's going to discuss code changes. Now Daisy is going to discuss code changes related to building standards.
Great, thank you, Anis. So staff proposes several key updates to building standards. From the February twenty twenty two public draft. In response to commissioner questions and after coordinating with development review staff, the shading study requirement has been added back into. Chapter thirteen eleven to align with current practice and ensure that shade considerations are accounted for during design review. Also for commercial districts, F A R floor area ratio has been increased from one to one point five. In alignment with the update to the general plan that I discussed earlier. And then finally, several updates are proposed to standards for the residential flex zone district. First, as explained earlier, in reference to the built environment element of the general plan, staff proposes that commercial uses should be allowed on the ground floor. Of the RF district. Second, in response to comments encouraging higher allowed density in the RF zone, staff proposes to increase. The F A R allowed, which will help developers achieve the intended densities while not increasing the density range or height or lowering parking standards. Staff analysis indicates that for projects and surface parking. Parking standards will continue to be the limiting factor in achieving the higher end of the density range. The RF zone district is intended to provide smaller, affordable by design units and therefore the F A R standard of one point one. Provides an important check on development of large luxury units in the RF zone district. Especially in cases where parking standards are waived or reduced. For this reason, staff proposes an F A R standard of one point one for developments less than thirty units per acre. And one point five for developments equal to or greater than thirty units per acre. Which ensures that F A R is not a limiting factor for the projects that are higher density using density bonuses. In addition, similarly to commercial districts, an exception to F A R standards. For RF developments is provided for projects with underground. Multi-story garage or podium parking in order to encourage those more efficient alternatives to surface parking lots. And then third, based on additional analysis, staff proposes to increase the minimum open space requirement. From ten percent to fifteen percent of growth site area for the RF district. This reflects commission comments that open space is a key element to ensure quality, high density developments. And particularly important for the new RF zone, which proposes to increase the county's maximum urban residential density. And staff looked at several examples of projects that have already been built to RF density. And those projects did incorporate. Open space at about fifteen percent. Okay, and then next I wanted to take a moment to talk about planning commission project review. So as Annie noted, the amendments to the county code include. An introduction of a new use permit and site development permit framework. So as part of that new permit framework, staff reviewed permit requirements for various project types. And right sized approval levels where appropriate. So no substantive changes are proposed to these procedures from the February twenty twenty two public draft. But the commissioners did request a summary of typical project types that would be subject to planning commission review under the new permit framework. So we wanted to provide that information. So overall, proposed changes allow some project types to be approved administratively. Where a public hearing was previously required. And many project types are proposed to change from planning commission to zoning administrator review. In order to give more time to the planning commission to devote to larger and more complex projects. These changes also allow the planning commission to continue with its core purposes as laid out in the county code. To develop and maintain the general plan. Develop specific plans as necessary, review the annual planning department work program and budget and review the capital improvement program. The commission is intended to be primarily a policy focused group. And the proposed changes to permit reviews would allow the commission to regain that focus on legislative actions. Such as code and general plan amendments. As well as weigh in on more controversial projects that come to the planning commission on appeal. Rather than reviewing less significant individual project applications. In terms of specific project application types that the planning commission would continue to review. Those would include certain agricultural infrastructure, commercial and cannabis uses. Permanent room housing projects, subdivisions with more than five sites. Certain medical projects and certain mixed use, commercial and residential projects. As well as senior housing projects. Note that in the staff report, there is an error in that the agricultural uses and the mixed use projects were not included in the list. Provided in the staff report of the the project types that the planning commission would review. And then regarding. Senior housing and mixed use, commercial and residential projects. Staff did identify an inconsistency between the draft commercial use chart and the site development permit chart. And we do propose an update that would allow for planning commission review. For projects with more than ten units rather than for projects with more than five units as indicated in the use chart. Since per the site development chart, residential projects generally do not require a conditional site development permit unless they include more than ten units. If the commission is amenable to that change, staff could bring that code amendment to the planning commission on the fourteenth. Or the commission could make that amendment as part of the recommendation process. Okay, and then. Wanted to talk about the design guidelines as well. So the project includes adoption of. New Santa Cruz County design guidelines that provide best practices. For building design, site development and connecting private development to the streetscape. The design guidelines are intended to guide the design of all projects, but especially multifamily residential and commercial development in the urban area. There are also guidelines specifically for the pleasure point commercial corridor included as an appendix to the document. The proposed guidelines provide overarching guidelines. As well as specific design guidelines for multifamily residential, mixed use, commercial and workplace flex project types. The design guidelines would be adopted as a separate document or incorporated by reference. In chapter thirteen eleven of the proposed code amendments. So since February twenty twenty two, the guidelines have been updated to address planning commission comments. Add clarity and correct errors. And similarly to the code and the general plan, all substantive changes are shown with yellow highlight. And attached as exhibit each. One key change that we wanted to note was an update throughout the guidelines to clarify which aspects of the guidelines are intended to be enforced as regulations. And which are optional guidelines only. At the study session, staff clarified that the guidelines are generally not quantitative and are intended to model best practices. Projects that undergo design review are required to substantially conform.
Recording stopped.
Guidelines. In the updated draft guidelines, staff has further clarified.
Can I interrupt for a quick second? I'm so sorry. We just heard that the recording stopped and I want to make sure that we're in okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I heard that as well. So let's just check in. Backup zoom. I'm gonna try to resume it, but we're still recording on the main one.
Oh, you are?
So we can, we can continue?
Seems to like it. A quick question, though. We are running up to eleven thirty and so natural breaking point anyway, just wondering. How much of the presentation we might have left and if we want to try and get through that before we take a break?
So we are currently on slide seventeen of twenty.
Okay, sounds like we're almost there. Would it be all right with everyone if we just finished the presentation before we take a lunch break? Or was that eleven thirty pretty hard stop streak?
I think I'm hoping that's fine. That should be fine.
Okay.
Apologies, sorry, that's seventeen of twenty three slides.
Maybe we should go ahead and take the break and then come back, but I think we're looking at an extra session anyway you cut it.
Yeah.
Agreed. Okay, if we have yeah, that many more, let's let's do that. Then I apologize, Ms. Allen. Did you want to finish a thought before we take a break? And since I just interrupted you right in the middle of a sentence?
Yeah, why don't I finish the discussion about the design guidelines since I was almost. Finished with that and then we can pick up with the map amendments when we come back from the break?
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, so. Okay, so I was noting that in the in the updated draft guidelines, staff has further clarified the relationship between the guidelines and the county regulations. By making note of relevant quantitative county code standards and county design criteria. That enforce the concepts that are presented in the guidelines. These notes appear throughout the guidelines in orange text with explanation provided. In the introduction as well as the beginning of each chapter. And text was also in some cases updated to remove language such as require or ensure and add language such as consider. And then another key change to the guidelines was an update to appendix B. Which addresses the development along the Portola Drive corridor in pleasure point. So in alignment with the. Pleasure Point Commercial Corridor Study and updated general plan policies. Language was added to encourage delivery trucks going to businesses on Portola Drive. To remain on Portola Drive rather than on side streets. Language was also updated to clarify that all of the overarching design guidelines do apply within the pleasure point commercial corridor. Staff does note that members of the public have expressed concern about language in appendix B, page B twelve, number three. Regarding consideration of an easement on Avis Lane. Staff has not made any text change to that portion of the guidelines at this time. And so that concludes our our comments on the guidelines and then after the break, Stephanie will pick up with the math amendments.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, for getting us to this point and we'll go ahead and take a break right now, thirty minutes and be back just after noon. Twelve oh five, let's say, and. Continue from here.
And maybe we could have some potential dates for another meeting. So we can, so we can be sure when we're gonna meet.
Okay, I'll coordinate with Stephanie during the break.
Right.
Thank you.
Everyone, see you soon.
See you at twelve oh five.
This window.
I just, I want to make sure that the recording has stopped. Yeah, I'm gonna mute you, Renee.
Are we back yet?
I'm back.
Okay, well, that's two of us anyway. Okay, thanks. I always want to make sure everything's working. Thanks.
No, thanks.
Good afternoon officially. It's 12:05 and.
Recording in progress.
Perfect. Recording in progress. And I think I'll just wait to see more people and make sure everyone's here and then do a roll call. Please, and then go from there.
I heard Judy and Renee during break, they think they're here.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. We should do a quick roll call.
Yes, please, thank you.
All right, so Chair, do you want to reconvene the meeting?
Yes, please. Let's reconvene and continue with the roll call and then move on or back to the presentation for agenda item number eight.
Great, so welcome back everyone to the August 24th Planning Commission meeting. I will take a quick roll call. Commissioner Lazenby.
All right, I'm here.
All right. Commissioner Shepard?
Here, thank you.
Commissioner Vialante?
Here.
Commissioner Dan?
Here.
And Chair Gordon?
Here.
All right.
Great, thank you. We are all present and accounted for. Ms. Hanson, can we please continue with the presentation for agenda item number eight today?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to talk a little bit about the map amendments. The project includes targeted land use changes and rezoning on 23 parcels located throughout the county. There are two types of land use changes. The first type are amendments to eliminate inconsistencies between the general plan maps and zoning maps on 13 parcels. The county is required by state law to ensure consistency between the general plan maps and the zoning maps. No intensification of land use is proposed as a result of these corrections. The slide shows the proposed map changes in North County and South County, a total of five. The second type, let's see, I think we had a correction, don't we? Oh, nope, that's on the next slide. Okay, sorry. The second type of amendments includes targeted rezones of 10 key opportunity sites along transportation corridors to implement the new residential flex zoning district. As discussed earlier, the project also includes. Sorry, little glitch in my notes here. We're going to move on to the next slide, Natasha.
Great, thank you. In mid-county, there are also eight properties that will change to correct zoning and land use inconsistencies. These are shown on the map on the left. Staff is aware that one of the property owners up on Glen Haven Road has submitted a comment saying they would like their two parcels to be removed from the project. Staff has reached out to this property owner. Actually, we've had a few conversations with them and they've confirmed that they would like to be. Would like to be removed. So when we return, you'll see that those two parcels come off the list.
I just have a really quick question. You didn't understand, why is what's proposed for the general plan different than the proposed zoning? I don't understand that.
There are two sets of maps. There are land use designation maps in the general plan. They tell you what kind of land use designation you're going to have on a property. Then there's a zoning map and the zoning map has zone districts and you might have, in some communities, you have more than one zoning district that's allowed in the general plan. Land use designation, although ours tend to be more one for one, and so both sets of maps need to be updated. And land use designations are termed a little bit differently than zoning districts. The second type of land use amendment is intended to implement the project goal of increased housing options and help to address the housing crisis. This portion of the project includes rezoning of 10 underutilized parcels, including key opportunity sites along transportation corridors. There's one six acre parcel at SoCal Drive and Thirber Lane, which is also shown on the map on the left. This is vacant and would be rezoned to a mix of residential flex and commercial to facilitate a mixed use development. The map on the right shows nine additional parcels located along Portola Drive. These would be rezoned to residential flex to facilitate a transition in this neighborhood to a mix of multifamily residential interspersed with neighborhood commercial, consistent with the vision for the corridor in the pleasure point vision and guiding principles planning study. The commission has also received some community feedback regarding the surf shop at 3051 Portola Drive. This is shown as parcel number one on the map on the right. And we'd just like to clarify, just like the other properties that are proposed for residential flex zoning, there's no development proposed at this time. We also note that this property is not designated as a historic resource in the county's inventory. But this property, just like every other property that's older than 50 years old, would be evaluated for inclusion on the local inventory if a development is ever proposed. Okay, a little bit about the environmental impact report. As required by state law, the county has prepared an environmental impact report, or EIR, to analyze the impacts of the sustainability update project. The EIR analyzes all topics as required by the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. The draft EIR was released on April 14th and a public comment period was open until May 31st. A community meeting on the draft EIR was also held on May 9th. The final EIR was released on August 12th. The final EIR largely consists of responses to comments and corrections to the EIR text. The EIR for this project is a program EIR, which means that it's higher level countywide. It's not project specific in its analysis of the environmental impacts. The EIR analyzed all elements required under SEQA and found that there were some significant and unavoidable impacts that could occur in the following resource areas despite the inclusion of mitigation measures. These are largely associated, not so much with the adoption of the policies or the general plan itself, but in the growth that could occur under the general plan in the next 20 years. So those significant impacts were in agriculture. And that is that ancillary uses, support services, and the essential public facilities and utilities that could be located on see a land could result in a conversion of prime farmland, unique farmland or farmland of statewide importance. The mitigation measure proposed for this is to add public and quasi-public facilities to the types of projects that require special findings and requirements to address conversion of agricultural land. In biological resources, the project includes the redesignation and rezoning of that six acre site on Thirber Lane. The site is a site that's bisected by a stream. It's bisected from north to south. So further development on this site could impact that stream, particularly if it's piped or moved. And the preparation, which would be a permanent impact to the riparian habitat on the site. So mitigation measure bio-2B would require the preparation of a mitigation plan detailing replacement of habitat areas at a two to one replacement ratio as well as maintenance and monitoring for the establishment of plants in the restoration areas. In cultural resources, although it's unknown at this time, there could be future development that could result in a substantial adverse change to undocumented historic built resources. And if preservation or avoidance isn't feasible, then two mitigation measures would address this. One would be the preparation of the historic resources evaluation and measures to avoid impacts. And the second would be to require that historical buildings that are proposed for major alteration or demolition be thoroughly documented according to industry standards, which includes written and photographic materials. In transportation, impacts are measured using vehicle miles traveled, which we've discussed. This is the number of miles generated by vehicles. One mile traveled by one vehicle is one VMT. In this way, transportation impacts are more closely tied to the reduction of greenhouse gases, which is a major state goal and also county goal. And the county has adopted VMT thresholds for new development as required by state law. Although the urbanized development pattern policies and programs in the sustainability update will reduce VMT when compared to current conditions and growth under the current general plan, the EIR found that VMT would not be reduced enough to meet the county's adopted threshold in the residential and non-retail categories. Also, there would be a cumulative impact when you consider other developments and developments in the pipeline. So mitigation measures that are proposed would be TRA1, which would develop a regional mitigation program to create a mechanism for funding transit, bike and pedestrian projects and multimodal transportation improvements. Private development would be able to offset their VMT impacts by contributing to the projects. And mitigation measure TRA2 would add an additional implementation strategy to the general plan to evaluate additional parking related measures such as paid parking and the use of parking fees. In utilities and services systems, the EIR also found that there would be a significant and unavoidable impact to water supply. Future potential development and growth appears to be within the growth projections developed by the water districts serving the unincorporated area. However, depending on the timing of development, potential growth in Live Oak and the city of Capitola could approach or exceed the city of Santa Cruz's forecasted housing units in their urban water management plan and SoCal Creek Water District, which includes SoCal and Aptos and La Silva Beach, could also approach or exceed that district's forecast. These impacts are therefore conservatively considered potentially significant and no mitigation measures were identified to offset them. See, during the public comment period, there were 14 comments received on the draft EIR. Can we jump to the next slide? Thank you. And responses to these comments are addressed in the final EIR, which was released on August 12th. The county received comments from local, regional, and state agencies, community organizations, as well as members of the public. These comments and staff responses are summarized in the staff report, starting on page 33 of your packet. The comments span a range of topics as indicated in this slide. Responses to the comments include corrections to the EIR text as needed and as shown in chapter three of the final EIR. Some comments were acknowledged, but did not really address environmental impacts directly. And some of these comments were much more policy oriented. So they're being addressed in some of the changes that we've been discussing today and will continue to discuss. These comments are regarding agricultural impacts associated with utilities and public facilities, coastal priority uses, the memorandum of understanding for development west of Watsonville, riparian mitigation banks, which has been added to the general plan, special status species with, which we've corrected with the new appendix to the general plan, as well as EIR changes and some parking reduction strategies that also resulted in new policy changes. So again, we just wanted to take a moment to go over the timeline for the project. The draft amendments were made available to the public at the end of February and the August 2022 hearing drafts were released last week. And project documents will remain available for review and comment throughout the public process until the documents are adopted by the board of certified, board of supervisors and certified by the coastal commission. Today's meeting marks the first planning commission public hearing and will return to your board either on September 14th or the date you set when we have discussion. And at that time, we'll be requesting a formal recommendation to the board of supervisors, as is shown in your packet. Then the board of supervisor public hearings are scheduled to be held in late October through just probably November and maybe into December if necessary. After that adoption by the board, most amendments will need to go to the coastal commission for certification. So with that, our recommended actions today are to conduct a public hearing to review the proposed amendments. Continue the public hearing either to September 14th or a date that you set. So it's a little bit of a change from what we had in the staff report. And as necessary to address any final changes to the documents. And then under number three, we have the attached resolution, which we're recommending that the the planning commission adopt in order to recommend the amendments to the board. This would recommend certification of the EIR based on findings of fact and statements of overriding considerations, which are attached to the resolution. And then adoption of the proposed amendments. The adoption of the new County of Santa Cruz design guidelines and map amendments, and then directing staff to submit the amendments that are coastal implementing and the general plan, which is our local coastal program, over to the California Coastal Commission for certification. So the final language that that we would ask for is included in number three. And with that, I think we'll end our presentation and turn it back to you, Chair. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation very thorough and you explained a lot, made it really easy to understand. And I really appreciate that. Before we go on to commissioner discussion or questions, we talked about opening the public comment. And so I think we could go ahead and move to that or that part of the of the hearing right now. So Ms. Drake, if we could please open public comment for this item. Thank you.
So if we could please have three minutes. Put up on the timer for each speaker. That would be great. I will start with Barry Scott. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Well, thank you. My name is Barry Scott and I live in Aptos. And I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak to the plans. The, you know, plans should be aspirational and facts fact based, and sometimes the facts change. And it's good to be a bit idealistic and it's essential that as conditions change, planning documents change to meet those changing facts. So with regard to all of the housing and mobility chapters, and especially to any amendments to the general plan, the current draft of the sustainability update recognizes that there is currently no high quality transit in the county. But recently in June, the county residents overwhelmingly rejected a proposition that would have converted the branch rail line and rail quarter to a trail only, preferring to keep rail transit planning in our general plan. Earlier this month, the RTC voted unanimously to proceed with an EIR and preliminary engineering for electric rail transit, as well as continued progress on the coastal rail trail. Unfortunately, most, if not all of the community outreach for the draft in front of you today and comments you have occurred before the the significant vote and these recent developments. The branch rail line is connected to the state rail network and is included in Caltrans state rail plans. Monterey County is building a Salinas to Gilroy passenger rail extension progress project that will include a station in Parrow where our rail line connects to the main line. The rail line provides one of the last best opportunities in the county to develop higher density housing and get cars off highway one, thus helping the county meet its access and mobility goals and sustainability goals by planning for that development in areas along the branch rail line to be serviced by electric passenger rail, as well as the wonderful coastal rail trail alongside the tracks. Chapter three on mobility and access does not mention high capacity transit, but there's an opportunity to include it now. Land use planning, supporting transit oriented development needs to occur as our rail system is planned. And that could mean starting the visioning process now of how development will look when rail is implemented. Accordingly, sustainable planning documents for housing and mobility should include goals for transit oriented development along the rail line and include zoning changes in order to support a future rail and trail system. These policy issues will need to be addressed and waiting too long would create more burden on future policymakers who will likely be faced with an even more urgent housing and climate issues. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Barry. All right. Next, we will hear from last four digits, 2915. I think this is Becky, but we will find out. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Becky Steinbrenner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I first want to point out, I did send an email to several of you during the break that you have visibility of slides coming in on a telephone. I do not. And so I asked that you include those slides as an attachment in any future planning commission materials on the agenda so that those of us coming in on telephones can follow along and get the same level of information. I want to come right along on the the draft of Mr. Scott regarding the the residential ultra-high flex, the RUHF zoning, the new dense development. None of those parcels are near the rail corridor. And to, as Mr. Scott pointed out, we need to really change our thoughts. Where our dense development goes to dovetail with infrastructure and putting ultra-high dense development near along the rail corridor will support that and will in fact encourage the use of passenger rail in the future. So I really question why all of this is being put on Portola Drive, which the they're actually recommending to reduce the number of lanes of that currently four lane corridor. Put the the dense development near right along the rail corridor. That really needs to happen. I also, because I don't have the slides, I'm having difficulty following along. I've tried to to link into the documents and follow as best I can. But what I'm concerned about is that some of the agricultural conditional uses are changing. On page five dash two, five and two, six, ARC one dot one dot seven, it includes other community or public facility uses allowed. And it bothers me to hear that there could be ministerial approval of some of these. That has brought a great amount of controversy to the county in the past. And I really want to see more public input rather than more ministerial approvals, eliminating public input. Regarding ARC one dot one dot 13 on page five dash 27, it talks about that the new law policies will prohibit expansion of water and sewer in county controlled areas. Your group, your commission needs to know that the state and Santa Cruz County LAFCO are moving to consolidate many of these utilities.
Becky, I hate to interrupt again. I apologize. I really appreciate your feedback.
You know, this really isn't fair. This isn't fair. This is so much information and we only get three minutes, but I understand. I'll send written comment. My final thing is that none of these documents are available in hard copy at the public libraries other than the guideline document. So please get them to the public library so people can review them and thank you for this time.
Thank you, Becky. Okay. The next person with their hand raised is identified as Janine. Good afternoon, Janine. Will you please state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Janine Ross. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Janine Ross and I'm speaking on behalf of Santa Cruz YMB. Santa Cruz YMB advocates for abundant and affordable housing in our county. And first of all, thank you to everyone who put an incredible amount of time and effort into developing this sustainability update, including these presentations and the community engagement. We have sent in the comments in written format. I hope you've been able to see them. I'll cover it in a lot less detail today. So firstly, we do want to recognize that this update offers a really significant opportunity to address the housing crisis with zoning and standard changes. But I do want to highlight the urgency to getting going on the work. And it ties back to the earlier conversation about planning for significantly more housing in the next RENA cycle. The changes proposed in the sustainability update are estimated to increase the capacity by about 4,500 housing units over 20 years. The RENA for the period of 2023 to 2031 are high. The RENA is a minimum of 4634 housing units for the county. So it's about the same number as the sustainability update, but less than half the time period. So the rezoning and the standards that the county adopts through the sustainability update allows us to start addressing the housing crisis immediately. The additional rezoning in the housing element is likely to take another three years, which is nearly mid-cycle for the RENA cycle. So you know that if we don't adequately rezone to accommodate housing needs through the sustainability update, it'll probably be next to impossible for the county to be on track to meet the RENA goals and will be subject to the streamlined approval of SB 35 in 2027. So there's no way that you could permit the thousands of new homes by 2027 if you don't finish zoning for them. So there's some specific feedback on the update for residential. The increases in height and floor area ratio and allowable dwelling units per acre are still inefficient to meet the housing needs, especially along the corridors. The metrics of the floor area ratio and units per acre are becoming less useful in land use planning circles because the metrics based on form based zoning are more efficient. We appreciate the principle of missing middle housing, but the update limits the far of small housing units to the minimum required by the state SB 438. So we recommend increasing the far there. The new workplace flex district should include residential development, including in so-called live work occupancies. We stress further use of the Dutch intersections. Thank you for the focus on bike parking and further decrease parking to encourage alternative transportation. Finally, the board of supervisors approve moving forward with the pro housing designation and this input is has strong synergy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. All right. I will now call on Mark Johansson. Good morning, please, or I guess afternoon, please restate your name for the record.
Good morning or good afternoon. My name is Mark Johansson and I'm a resident of Aptos. So without repeating some of the prior comments, in light of the community rejecting the proposition recently, the widow converted the Santa Cruz branch line to a trail only, but instead the committee decided to proceed or indicated that wanted to proceed with the county's preferred alternative passenger rail along the adjacent trail line. So the Santa Cruz branch line is one of the last and best quarters to improve our housing situation and get cars off of highway nine. But planning for the densities on that quarter needs to start now. And that can start with the land use planning, supporting transit oriented development in the planning documents that you're reviewing today. It includes comments in the visioning process, the mobility and access process, and start adding goals for development. The problem you're going to have if the delay in any kind of zoning activities that will be required for the high density line that quarter is it will, if it's not in conjunction with the development of the rail system, it's just going to delay having a successful system along that line and also delay some of the housing and sustainability issues that county might see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, going back to the list, I'm just going to remind everybody that to provide comment today, you would press star nine on your telephone or use the hand icon on the Zoom app. Okay, let's see a hand raised by Jean Rocklebank. Good afternoon, Jean. Please restate your name for the record.
I see the clock has started, but I haven't started to speak yet. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And to the commissioners, definitely want to continue the public hearing at least to September 14th. The fact that only 14 comments were received on the EIR, the draft EIR should tell commissioners how very overwhelming this entire sustainability update process has been. The planning department staff started stated regarding trails. I'm here to speak about the environment, by the way. At the planning commission studying session, there were concerns labeling any open space passive trails as transportation routes. And they said it's only the Monterey Bay scenic trail and any other future trail design will be managed by the parks department and would be subject to a future parks master plan. I'm going to ask what parks master plan? There is no plan for a parks master plan. Meanwhile, the parks department is allowing trails to be built and is very chummy with the mountain bikers association. I don't think this association has credentials for hydrology, erosion or biological impact. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also very concerned about what was described as future development at Thurber Lane and SoCal Drive property can't be mitigated. We're going to cover up, we're going to destroy another stream. And there is no mitigation except that we can, we can possibly do replacement of habitat areas in a two to one replacement ratio. We don't, we're destroying habitat areas. We can't make new habitat areas. Last, regarding sustainability and resource protection. And here's where I'm really serious. I wonder why the planning department did not review chapter 16.92, the environmental principles and policies to guide county government. Why didn't they look at that and renew 16.92? Not only renew it, but make it part of this. The purposes, of course, of 1692 are to state the determination of the people of Santa Cruz County relative relative to environmental policies and principles, to direct county government to utilize its powers and resources to endeavor to provide for more efficient use of renewable energy, to protect biological diversity and human health through protection and restoration of the environment. And so I really hope that the... Well, I think what I'll do, since I only have about fifteen seconds left, is I'm going to take the time and write these comments and send them both to the Planning Department and the Planning Commission because I care about the environment and I want to see it protected. Thank you very much.
Jean. All right. And I see Oliver has his hand raised. Good afternoon, Oliver. Please state your full name for the record.
Hi, this is Ishtar Carter, speaking on behalf of my husband Oliver Carter and myself. We are speaking today in regards to the eclectic and historical culture on Portola Drive. My husband Oliver and I are the owners of Blown Out Wet Suit Repair and Surf Shack, located in the historical landmark at three zero five five Portola Drive. The ninety-eight-year-old building has rich local history. It is the site where Freeline Surf Shop began in nineteen sixty-nine. Before that, Hoult Surf Cords was located here. It is my knowledge that the historic building we currently run, our small business out of, is being considered for rezoning. I would also like to note that there are three residential units on this parcel with families. None of us were notified that our parcel was up for rezoning. We find this very discouraging. If this rezoning happens and the current properties at three zero five one to three zero five five are potentially demolished for larger-scale apartments and shops, our business and the current long-term renting families will ultimately suffer displacement, financial strain, and unnecessary stress. Blown Out has been an institution in our community for over twenty-five years. We represent pleasure point surf culture. We are highly respected, highly appreciated, and most importantly, a sustainable business serving the pleasure point in greater Santa Cruz County communities. And we are asking you to reconsider this rezoning. Last year, we repaired over six hundred wetsuits, thus keeping six hundred wetsuits out of our county landfills. That is sustainability. We donate hundreds of used suits to those in the community who are less fortunate. We support our local youth with an extensive program that gives every child and every teen in our community a chance to have a wet suit, regardless of their financial situation. Our business is sustainable, and we support the local community in ways that cannot be expressed in three minutes. The irony that the proposed sustainability plan envisions mom and pop shops and families in the new units. We are your mom and pop shop, and we're representing pleasure point heritage, surf culture, ourselves, and other local families who are at risk with this proposal. We invite you all to come spend a few hours at our shop and see the rich culture and the hub of community that we represent. We are historical culture. Please do not tear down our building or propose rezoning, making it more desirable to tear down and sell. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you all listening to us.
Thank you, Ishtar. All right, going back to the list of attendees. This is the time for you to raise your hand. All right, I see Andrew Paulini. Good afternoon, Andrew. Please restate your name for the record.
Andrew Paulini. I guess, okay, I'm not sure if this is so. Let me know if this is like an appropriate place to make this comment, but this would be in response to about the building at, the rezoning at two zero five five Portola. Just in response, I'm looking at it. I understand that. I'd just like to encourage the Planning Commission to keep in mind that like, while occasionally some residents, rezoning does not mean that current residents will get displaced. I think we have to keep in mind that when people are concerned about like these, you know, supposed historical buildings, a lot of places count as historical is the truth. I mean, I live in a house that could theoretically count as historical. And it shouldn't keep us from building and just allowing change to happen. And we think about displacement of current residents. We also think about the displacement of people who did live here or wanted to live here but could not afford to. I have friends who've had to move out of the state, friends who've had to move out of the county because they could not find housing in the area. So, you know, these people who grew up, these are people, kids who I grew up with, who grew up here in the county. And then they become an adult and they either have to live at home with their parents or they just have to move somewhere else if they want their own place. And so I think it's important to keep in mind that rezoning may sometimes lead to some short-term pain for some people, that, you know, maybe a building gets torn down and replaced with something else that is bigger and allows more shops and more housing. In the long run, it's healthier for the community. And I just wanted to make that comment there, that more people are getting displaced by not having enough housing than probably might, than might get displaced by rezoning.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. All right. Are there any other members of the public who wish to provide comment at this time? Press star nine on your phone if you wish to make a comment and you are calling in. Okay. I'm not seeing any additional hands, Chair. If I see one pop up, might just pause and check in just to make sure.
Great. That sounds good. Thank you so much. And thank you for everyone who called in and has hung around to give us your feedback. We really appreciate it and are thankful you're able to make it here today. For now, then, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the Commission for Discussion. Just to do a quick time check, so everyone's on the same page. We've got about thirteen minutes. I'll make sure Valente needs to take off. And then about twenty minutes after that, we got to really figure out what our next date and all that is. So maybe we want to start with the next date of the hearing while everyone's here. And then, just to make sure we have consensus on that, actually, and then move on to comments. Mr. Drake, were you able to find any dates?
Stephanie and I actually did not have an opportunity to connect during the lunch break, so I'm not sure Stephanie has any prospective dates there that we can consider.
You know, thanks, Jocelyn and Trigord. Night. Steph has some flexibility with this. We'll defer to the Planning Commission's schedule, particularly if we're talking about a four-hour session, you know, in between our two hearings here. One thing I would say is maybe sooner rather than later to keep what we've heard today fresh in our heads so that we don't have to, you know, repeat information. We can just focus on the Commission's comments at that point.
Okay. I want to make sure that, I see that Michael Lamb is with us right now. I want to make sure that we have ample time to notice an additional meeting. So it looks like he's here. So when we're looking at dates, I just want to check in with him to see if there's adequate time for noticing. So, okay, well, we typically meet on Wednesdays, but we don't need to meet on a Wednesday. We can meet on a different day of the week. But I wonder if we should see if we can meet on a Wednesday since that's our usual date.
I think, Jocelyn, your question of noticing, I think, is the first thing that needs to be answered, which is the, what is the soonest we can meet and meet the obligation of noticing? Because I don't want us to have a discussion around dates and then realize that we are too...
Right. So I was gonna, so I was gonna propose that we ask Mike about September seventh. And I think that would be probably the soonest if we're looking at a Wednesday, but I wanted to check in with Mike.
September seventh would not work as the notices would have had to gone out three days ago. I know there is a little bit of a buffer, but if they went out today, we could probably meet the bare minimum deadline. But the notices do take a few hours to print, just because there's so many for the rezoning properties.
Okay.
Could I ask a question, Jocelyn? If the Commission postpones to a date certain, does that require the ten-day notice? Maybe Jason?
If you continue it to a date certain, that would probably work. I was thinking we probably would want to notice it just since we've heard some comments today about ample notification, but that might be okay.
We could still do a notice. Maybe it wouldn't meet that same ten-day. Yeah.
Jason is on it.
Yeah. I don't have a clear answer to that at this point. I would suggest that you go ahead and continue it to a date certain that you pick right now, and then staff can follow up with that. If you want to meet on September seventh, go ahead and meet on September seventh. Go ahead and schedule that. And then, and then if it turns out that we cannot do that for some reason, then we will so advise the Commission.
Well, if we have it on September seventh, I am planning to propose some changes. And I know, I expect other, I'm sure other commissioners are as well. Well, just making sure that if we give you changes on the seventh, you'll be able to incorporate them for the fourteenth.
We would not be able to do that.
Well, then we got a problem. We're going to have to change the fourteenth because we are going to be giving you changes. That's our job.
Oh, but I think that what Stephanie is suggesting, even when, you know, I, for instance, have provided some changes at previous meetings, they've incorporated some, they haven't incorporated others. So the ones that they haven't incorporated, so you can bring up your questions. I think what I was thinking was the extra meeting would be to get questions answered and clarification. But we should all be prepared with any changes we want to make, that we'd have to just be prepared to do that on the fourteenth. That's kind of how I'm seeing how things.
Okay. So what you're saying is we could come up, we could have the meeting on the seventh, ask lots of clarification questions, maybe, and if we want to propose changes, we could propose them and on the fourteenth, or we could make them on the fourteenth.
Yeah, I think at this point, we're ready to. If there are proposed changes, it's going to be through us voting as a Commission to make motions, and they're going to be final. They're going to be for the recommended, at least that's the impression I'm at, is where we're at as a Commission, which is like someone's going to make a motion to recommend that amendment to go to the Board. We're going to vote and send it onward, and those things are probably going to happen on the fourteenth. And we're going to do it very systematically versus our conversation on the seventh is for us to get any final discussion questions for staff or even if there's anything we want to have amongst ourselves. But it's more for questions and clarity. That's most where I feel we're at as a Commission. And that's what the four hours are for, is for us to kind of, like I have questions about some of the changes that were made or I wasn't able to participate at one of the hearings, and so I have a couple of follow-ups. But I didn't think that we were going to make staff make changes between those two hearings. That's not where I thought we were anymore.
I think if we had the opportunity today to respond, there would have been time to make changes. And that was kind of, excuse me, the hope for the fourteenth, so that we could come back like kind of clean, and then we'd have less amendments, you know. But seems like that might not be possible anymore.
I should be honest, I don't agree with the documents entirely, and I do have amendments to suggest. And I would hope for clarification and understand the rationale why some things are there, get my questions answered. And then if we're up against the fourteenth, we'll just have a long meeting and we can, that's when you would, as Commissioner Dan said, bring back changes. But let's see how it goes. I guess the best we can do is the seventh, which is too bad because that, but that gives us all two weeks to get very clear on the parts and questions we have. I've already got a bunch, and I know, so it ought to be razor-sharp in two weeks.
Should I, Chair, would you like me to just do a quick vote to see if folks are available for the seventh? It's, I haven't heard any.
Yeah, I have one quick question if we're, before we do that, just if we are going to do, postpone this to a date certain and the noticing doesn't in fact matter, could we do it sooner, like next week in order to give staff more time to make adjustments?
That would certainly be my preference. Can we do that? That would be best.
The thirty-first? If we do a date certain to the thirty-first, continue to a date certain thirty-first, what we could do is just do any courtesy noticing that we could do, but just not the public hearing noticing. I think that...
I'm sorry, I actually cannot do the thirty-first.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Can you do the seventh?
I can do the seventh. And I can do, I can do, wait, I'm sorry, I can do the, I can do the second. Also, if we want to have it next week.
I could do this. Can others do the second? That's a possibility.
Yes.
I can do it.
Yes, I can do the second as well. Rachel, I assume the first doesn't work for you?
The thirty-first, I'm so sorry.
No, the first.
The first, I have to find, I have to make a call before I could say for sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's go for the second since we can walk away knowing what we're doing.
Jason, from a procedural?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, but I don't want to interrupt you. Please ask me your question.
Yeah, from a procedural standpoint, if it turns out for noticing reasons, we cannot do the second, what does that mean in terms of will we still be able to move it to say the seventh? For noticing reasons, what problems does that raise for us if we don't set a date certain today?
Yeah, what I, what I, what I'm understanding is that you have a date certain set for September fourteenth, and that's already been noticed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So as a legislative body, you can have a special meeting on twenty-four hours' notice. You can also continue this public hearing to a date certain. The question that we don't have answered right now, because the staff needs to look into it more deeply, is whether or not there's a certain number of days that you have to notice to continue the public hearing. I don't believe that there are, but we need to confirm that. So my suggestion and recommendation would be that you go ahead and select the date that you want to have it. Somebody adopts, or somebody proposes a motion to continue this public hearing to that date certain. And then if we look further into it and find out that we can't do that because of the noticing issues, then staff will consult with the Chair about canceling that meeting that you just scheduled on, that you're planning to schedule on September first or second.
Well, that, how, will we be able to, I guess, is my question to that, to then schedule an alternative date between the two? So will we, will we be essentially kind of forfeiting our ability to have one, say, the week of the fifth? If it turns out that the second doesn't work?
No, that's what you're doing right now. I mean, you're just, you're trying to set an interim meeting. And so if it turns out that you can't set it in for a meeting, then you wouldn't be able to do it between the second and the fourteenth anyway. Because the notice, because if notice is a problem, then notice is a problem. And I'm sorry, we just don't have the answer to that question.
But aren't we, can we close the public hearing anyway?
What was that question?
We closed the public hearing.
Oh, the public comment portion of the hearing.
I don't think we closed the public hearing.
So where are we? I'm very confused. I think the second would be fine, or the seventh. The second would be better for staff.
Seems like we can choose a date between now and the fourteenth. There's a chance that it might not be able to happen due to noticing, but we won't know that right now. So then I guess the next question is if we don't have the opportunity to actually have a meeting between now and the fourteenth, and we need to push another week or something, you know, Ms. Hanson, is that going to be a huge issue? Seems like we need the time somewhere, so.
I'd really encourage you to find an interim date, if possible, so that we can continue to make our board meeting schedule.
Yeah, we, okay, I think that's our goal.
I think we are desperately trying to do so, but there isn't information available on whether we can do it or not. But I would agree, if we can't get till the fourteenth, we need another meeting, whenever it happens.
If we're treating it as a continuation, we don't need to re-notice. We've never re-noticed a continuation to a date certain. I was saying we could do a courtesy notice that wouldn't be the public noticing, but we have a, you know, a noticing list that we could send the information out to. But Jason, we haven't ever noticed a continuation. I'm not sitting in front of the code right now, but there's a code section that speaks to it. So I think we're fine there. We will double-check, but I think, I think we will be fine. We, we will double check, but I think, I think we will be fine. It's, and it's sounding to me like the 7th is, is a date that everybody is available at this time. Um, the second is a, is a maybe for, for Commissioner Dan.
Um, I mean, I would prefer the 7th, to be honest. Um, but I can do either, and I will make the first or the 31st. I, I can readjust things to make those work as well, so I'll, I'll just be flexible.
Okay, so we will follow up right after this meeting, um, with the commissioners to confirm, but I think that we're safe in, in moving forward with selecting a date, so.
Well, the advantage of choosing an earlier date is simply that if we want to make some suggested changes, they could be incorporated. So Rachel is, so you're saying of the three early dates?
I'll make the 31st work if that's what everybody else would like to do. Yeah.
I think any of 31st, 1st, or 2nd is fine for me.
I have a meeting on the 31st. I could look to move, um, but I do, it's smack in the middle. And, yeah, I do, I have a conflict on the 31st. I could, I could look to move, but I do.
So what about Rachel? You said the second is clear for you?
I can make the, the first or the second.
Allison?
The, the first and the second could both work for me.
Me too. Tim?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, you know, I can rearrange a lot of things, and that's what I'd prefer to do. So, um, and probably sooner rather than later, so my, my, uh, preference would be the first.
The first. I think we're choosing the first.
Works for me.
The Judy Mayan, did we hear from Commissioner Lazenby?
Is she here? There she is.
So you guys are looking at a Thursday, the first?
Yes.
Rachel, are you sure that works for you?
Judy?
Yes. Yes, I'm back, I think.
Yep, you're back.
And we are voting.
We're looking to, uh, to, um, move or, uh, schedule the next meeting for either Thursday, September 1st, or Friday, September 2nd. And just looking for consensus on the best day there. So did you have a preference or?
I have no preference on either one. I can, I can be there either day.
Wonderful.
Well, let's go, we, let's choose a date just to clean it up. Let's go for the first then.
Great. Everyone's okay with that?
Yeah, are we meeting 9:01 or 1:00, you know, morning or afternoon?
Um, I should probably, I don't, I, I'm just thinking just quickly about confirming with CTV staff. The folks who host our meeting, I will, um, text her really quickly. Um, the September 1st, and that works for your team, Stephanie. Right?
Yes, we can make that work.
Okay. Um, all right, I'm texting them. I think we should be able to find someone. Oh, she's asking. I have CTV staff checking just to confirm. I see a hand raised by Annie.
Um, yes, thank you, Jocelyn. I just wanted to mention, I did look up the code section, which is in 1810-223, E, which reads Notice of Continuances. Any matter may be continued from time to time. The proposal need not be renoticed if at the time of the public hearing for the proposal, the matter is continued to a specific date. Otherwise, the continued matter shall be noticed in the same manner as the original hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Let me, let me, let, let me just add, though, there's, there's additional considerations in addition to what's in our county code, um, that arise out of the Brown Act. Uh, the consideration is whether the meeting is being, um, continued or adjourned for less than five calendar days. No new agenda need be posted so long as a new item of business is not introduced. So it's making me, um, believe that we do need to post, um, Jocelyn, uh, because this is going to be for a continuance that's longer than, than five days. So we'll have to consult on that. Okay?
Okay, let's consult on that. Okay. Um, as I'm waiting to hear back from CTV staff, I would propose the same meeting time if that works. Everyone just, we're used to the 9:30 time.
Okay. Um, and if I could make just one more suggestion, if it's possible, I wonder since, um, we're kind of reserving these for commissioner comments, if, um, we could just start with commissioner questions? And if there's any public comment, then you can hear that.
At the end.
And staff, any staff presentation, um, be kind of like, maybe even just if there's anything staff wants the commission to know, maybe that can just be sent to us via email.
I think that's a good plan.
That's right. I don't think staff would have a presentation to, to add, and we could move right on to commissioner comments or public comments, as you wish.
Okay, does, do I need to make a motion or do we need for the Chair or what?
When we get there, we have to make a motion to continue the hearing to that date certain.
I will make a motion to continue this hearing to a date certain of, um, September 1st at 9:30.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to move the hearing or continue to 9:30 on September 1st. Any discussion before we move to a vote on this item?
I think we've discussed it a lot.
Great, great. Well, let's do that. Ms. Drake, can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner, uh, Lazenby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Vialante?
Yes.
And Chair Gordon?
Yes. Wonderful, that passes. And so then with that, we will move on, close an, um, agenda item number eight for today and continue it on next Thursday. So we can move on with our next regular scheduled agenda items. At this time, we have the Planning Director's Report. Do we have a report today? Mr. Machado, hello?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, you know, I've been meaning to give a little, um, info on water, and I think it's appropriate since we talked a bit about water today. And so I want to just give a high view and, uh, offer some more detail as we go forward. But, um, you all probably know a lot of this, but I'm going to give you some facts and figures. I just need about two minutes. So, um, as you all know, our region relies on surface water, groundwater, and recycled water. Uh, there's actually three primary groundwater basins, the Santa Margarita, the Mid County, and the Paharo. Uh, there's 15 principal watersheds, uh, the largest being the San Lorenzo River watershed. And interestingly, in 2020, uh, in total, our entire county region used 51,500 acre feet, without half of that being used by our ag industry, uh, in the Paharo Valley. Uh, of all this usage, 19% was surface water, three, uh, sorry, uh, 19% surface water, 78% groundwater, and 3% was, uh, recycled water. Uh, notably, though, the city of Santa Cruz, who serves about 100,000 people, they do serve people outside of their jurisdictional boundary. Uh, they rely, uh, on surface water for about 95% of their, um, of their supply. And, uh, each of our urban water suppliers have a urban water management plan, uh, where these plans, in addition to including drought measures, they also project adequate water supply for future growth. Uh, combined, these plans show a population growth of about 40,000 people by the year 2045. Current urban water supply, uh, today is about 23,000 acre feet per year. We, so we as an urban community or, or urban area uses about 23,000 acre feet per year. And the projected use by 2045 for the additional 40,000 people in our urban area is projected to be 26,000 acre feet. So about a 3,000 acre foot per year increase is projected over these next 30, uh, 33 year, uh, 23 years, sorry. And so, and this is where it gets interesting. I want to put that in perspective of, of other components of water in our region. So I'll first start by comparing it to rainfall. And so our county consists of about 400,000 acres. And even during a drought year, uh, we receive more than 24 inches of water every year. And by the way, our average rainfall, uh, in the coastal areas is about 36 inches, and in our mountainous areas, we get about 60 inches. Uh, but even in a drought condition, we still get more than 24 inches. So using the 24 inches over the 400,000 acres of land that can, that make up Santa Cruz County, that's 800,000 acre feet of rainfall lands on our county every year. So that's just perspective in terms of how much we use and how much water actually falls in our county. Um, another underutilized water source is actually wastewater. And so the city of Santa Cruz wastewater treatment plant, they discharge about 36 acre feet per day out into the ocean. Uh, that equals about 13,000 acre feet per year. Uh, and with minimal, uh, additional treatment, that water could be used for irrigation. And with further treatment, it could be used as a potable water supply. Uh, in conclusion, there are real opportunities to increase our total water supply by better utilizing our existing resources versus not having enough resources to supply our needs. I just want to point out the, the water resource that we have in our county, it's vast. You know, we're not necessarily using it all today, we're not even managing it all today, but there's definitely opportunity. I share this with you because if you would like more information, more detailed information about water supply in general, uh, we could certainly, um, uh, schedule a future presentation for your, for your commission. And that concludes my report today. Thank you.
I, I just have to say that's a really helpful, but those are such a gross overview. I mean, I think to really assess the water, you'd have to talk to the water districts. I mean, just saying, would we get this much rain and this much? But, you know, that doesn't really tell me, I mean, that's helpful and interesting, but doesn't really speak to the issue of, you know.
So.
It's too high level.
I agree with that, and that's why I'm offering a detailed presentation by our, uh, water providers. And we do have, uh, a group, and so we do have an integrated regional water manager. And so I'd be happy to arrange for a detailed presentation to get into those details. I agree, I'm just, I'm just trying to whet your appetite for a little more water conversation is all I'm trying to do.
Um, to, to what end? Do you think the planning commission needs to hear this at this point in time? What, why, what's going on?
I think it would be a good future conversation. I, I don't think it's today. I think we have our hands full today, but I'm just planting a seed for the future, uh, no time certain. I think understanding our water supply is an important, um, part of all of our jobs. And so I think there's value in understanding the details and the future potential and the opportunities for, for, um, utilization and management of our water resource, which is, I would say, one of our most important resources that we have. And so I'm just planting a seed now for a, a future discussion if the commission would like to.
Well, thank you. I, I, I think that's helpful, but if we had a future discussion, I'd sure like to hear from the SoCal Water District and the San Lorenzo Water District and the city and Scotts Valley, because they all seem to have different opinions about everything.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. And I just want to add, I find it fascinating, and I would love to have more conversation at some point, whenever the time's right, and, uh, be able to understand those points a little bit better and, you know. Yeah, so thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. And, uh, we are scheduled to talk about any report on upcoming meeting dates and agendas. We talked about that quite a bit, but, um, Ms. Drake, do we have further, uh, discussion on that?
Um, well, just quickly, it sounds like we'll be meeting on September 1st, a special meeting. And then we'll be meeting again on September 14th, and those are both meetings to, um, continue the discussion on the sustainability update. And then the next meeting after that is September 28th. And so far, we have one item on that agenda, which is the, um, Sea Cliff Hotel project.
And if I can just interrupt very briefly, Jocelyn, I have confirmed, uh, during that colloquy there that we, we do need to post an adjournment of the meeting within 24 hours. Uh, and, uh, uh, the continuance, the adjournment and continuance of the, of the public hearing, uh, to a special meeting on September 1st, which we will have to post. So we have to post both of those things, the continuance of the meeting within 24 hours, and then the special meeting, uh, agenda will have to be posted within 24 hours of the, uh, September 1st date.
Jason, can I ask a clarification question on that?
Sure.
Does that just need to be posted on the county's website and a paper copy and on our department floor? Or what, what's the extent of the posting?
It needs to be, give me one second.
Thanks.
Yeah, a copy, a copy of the, of the order or notice of adjournment slash continuance, uh, has to be placed conspicuously posted on or near the door of the place where the regular adjourned, regular special or adjourned special meeting was held within 24 hours after the time of adjournment. So you need to post it. I would do both. I would, I would post it like you do regular, um, agenda materials.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a good lesson in the applicability, practical applications of chapter 1810, and the use conspicuously, which is subjective.
Um, yes, I agree. And I'm going to follow up with you, Jason, after the meeting, just to be clear on continuances, but I don't want to take up our time with that. Today's meeting, great, thank you.
We didn't.
Uh, so yeah, that's, that's it for future upcoming, um, agendas, Chair.
Great, um, thank you. We didn't, um, finalize maybe direction on this, but are we going to send out courtesy notices for the hearing next week? I think it'd be beneficial if we're able to do so.
We have a, we have a list, um, that we can send out, um, an email list, as I recall. So we can send it out to those folks if we want to do a courtesy notice. Um, that, maybe that same one that we're going to post, um, we can email out. I'll, I'll confirm with Stephanie how she wants to handle that, but I, I agree that if we, if it's easy to do, that that would be good customer service.
Yeah, okay, awesome, thank you. Perfect. And last, uh, item on agenda, county, county councils report, anything to report today?
No, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Hey, that sounds great. With that, then, we are through our agenda items, and we can go ahead and enter in the meeting today. And I appreciate everyone's help and, you know, effort getting through this and looking forward to the next one.
Thank you, Chair.
See you on the 1st.
Okay, bye.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone, bye.